Dominican.
Would you could print two sets for us?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, well, you can find it.
Directed to.
Okay, good evening, we're calling to order the November 18th Sherman School Committee meeting at 6:30. First item of our, on our agenda is community comments. Are there any community comments?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
I want to, I want to be a community member for this particular moment, and I would like to thank Mr. Bliss, Mrs. Brown, for the wonderful support during the Election Day food drive that you provided. Our student directors collected 75 bags of food that they were able to bring to the, to a place to turn in native, and at the same day that we delivered our food, which was the Saturday after the election, was also the day that the Boy Scouts were collecting theirs, was another one of, you know, Mrs. Brown's constituents, and they also brought in a huge amount of food, so by the time Sherborne left a place to turn, there was no more place. So they'll take care of them for a week or so. And we, there was also a very nice article about Sherborne stocks to shelves in the Dover Sherborne Press, and there was also some words in the Hometown Weekly, so I just wanted to, as a community member, thank you very much for that.
Is it inappropriate to add a comment to a comment, to a public comment?
Sure.
Our fifth graders are all visiting a place to turn tomorrow, they're going over in three shuttles because I understand it's limited space, and they have, our fifth grade through their civic and public service project that they do have taken a place to turn on as a year, a place to turn as a year-long project.
Wonderful.
And the executive director recently sent a thank you note on behalf of our students, so thank you for recognizing that.
And thank you Frank for your involvement in getting this going here during Election Day, thank you. Great, next we have Dr. Brown with the Pine Hill update.
CSA.
Nope. Oh, excuse me, I skipped you guys, I didn't see you before.
Shaking up the front.
All right, gentlemen.
Well, first, in the sphere of Thanksgiving, we have a lot to be thankful for at this meeting, we've had a very good month with CSA, and a lot of it was due to contributions across the Pine Hill community, and I'll highlight a few. We most recently had our Harvest Luncheon with the Council of Aging at the Pilgrim Church, and I was just spearheaded by Emily Adaly as well as Kate Potter, well-attended, but really it relied upon the contributions from Pine Hill parents providing, preparing the food as well as helping out on the scene. We also wrapped up one of our fundraisers for the fall, Genovine. It was a very significant improvement over the year prior, we did almost, we raised almost twice as much money, and for us, those definitely will help out our budget because we had targeted to be leveled with last year, and it'll definitely help us with the program going into the spring. And I want to thank Alex Morrell for her efforts on that, there was a lot of promotion on her end to help bring additional attention to that and to help us achieve that success. We also would like to announce that we have two new members, well, actually one new member to the board, we have co-chairs for our auction in the spring, and we'd like to announce that'll be Sarah O'Connell and Kate Potter, and Kate's already on the board, she's our MEKO chair, and Sarah O'Connell, if you recall, is no stranger to the CSA, she's been on the board in the past, and most recently she helped us with a successful 5K as a co-director of that event. And then, just some things that, to be looking out for upcoming, Pine Hill Directory, this is a transition year for us, we're relying upon, we're trying to rely upon the transition to using data from Aspen, we've been working with the school, and we will have that out hopefully before Thanksgiving, don't hold me to that, but we're feverishly trying to complete it, and we appreciate everyone's patience as we go through that. And then, looking forward, we'll probably be around the first, second Saturday of January, we'll again do a Pancake Breakfast, which is a community event that's sponsored by the CSA. Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you. If I may, Mr. Hess, I just also want to publicly thank Mr. Welch and Mr. Embry and all of CSA for their ongoing support of the DARE program. The school committee, Sherborne School Committee knows that we've been wrestling a bit with putting the funding together to make sure that we're able to continue with that very important relationship between Pine Hill students and the Sherborne Police Department, and through the very generous increased support from CSA as well as some funding from the school and, and some generous funding from Sherborne PD, we collectively are able to make sure that program continues in earnest this year, so I want to publicly thank both of you for your diehard support of that relationship, thank you so much.
Thank you as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Brown?
We have a busy agenda tonight, so I'll just highlight a couple things, I would like to publicly thank Ray Weiss for his liaison with, with our school from the Sherborne Veterans Council. We had a few inter, a few opportunities to interface with veterans, our fifth graders had a very specific question and answer presentation forum as, as part of launching their, some of the civic work that they do, and some of the veterans, Ray Weiss specifically came to our all-school meeting and presented to all our students in honor of Veterans Day. One of our students, Rhea Bahadur, was the winner of the essay contest, and our fourth and fifth grade chorus were invited to attend the Veterans Day celebration and, and sing the National Anthem, so that was very special. I also had a note to share about DARE, and I just want to add to what Superintendent Bliss already said, it's official that Chad Smith will be the officer facilitating DARE at Pine Hill School, and we have that scheduled to start right after the new year, it'll be Wednesdays running, running January, February, March, and the new program, incidentally, under DARE, is called Keeping It Real. And I'll stop there because I know we have other conversations.
Great. Okay, Mr. Bliss?
Sure, thank you very much, and Dr. Brown, just to piggyback a bit on the Veterans Day, in addition to the congratulations to Rhea and to the fourth and fifth grade chorus, also want to recognize and just publicly thank Colonel Diana Hook, who was there, Frank Hook's wife, who was quite a presence at the Veterans Day event here at the, at the town hall on, on Veterans Day, so Mr. Hook, our thanks to your wife, the good Colonel, for her good work, and she just is, is a wonderful presence, and we thank her for being a part of our community.
I'll share that if she's not listening to us right now.
Well, she might be tuned in, never know. Of course she is, what else is there to do on Tuesday night?
In addition, we are forming what we're affectionately referring to as a Business Manager Task Force, and Ms. Christine Teague will be retiring actually next summer after six years with the school district, a school system actually, the three, how could we ever forget the three districts, Chris? And Chris has done just an incredible amount of work for our school system for the three school districts, we began together six years ago, and Chris will be retiring, so in a meeting with the chairs over the past couple weeks, it was discussed that it would be a really good time to put together a task force, not quite the search committee, but a task force to begin to maybe look at some of the functions of the business office, and yeah, it would be one representative from each school committee working with myself, and very informal, but to begin to put some thoughts together in what, what that, what we may be able to do to recalibrate a bit the business office and the central office, so we'd be looking for someone from Sherborne School Committee to liaise with, with me on that effort if there is a taker.
If I could, I'd like to make a suggestion, is I'd like to request that Mr. Greg Garland represent us on that committee? Did you?
Well, no, I mean, I was just saying, I wouldn't, I'd like to do that, I just, you know, schedule-wise, I'd have to be a little bit flexible, but if you're interested, Adam.
Is it, okay.
I mean, I think we would probably be looking for a date for meetings during the days, your work schedule still?
Yeah, no, I mean, that's why I hesitate to commit, but.
I'd enjoy doing it.
Definitely have an interest.
Okay, okay. Are you, is the committee okay with Mr. Garland?
Can you send us from the committee on that, yes?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, is that? Thank you.
And really just to thank Chris, I mean, it, the, the systems that she has put in place in the past six years, what she walked into and what she's leaving, it's, it's often referenced, it's much better to leave a place, far better than what you found it, and that is definitely true with the business office, Chris has done incredible amount of work for those of us who've been around for the six years, so thank you, Chris, publicly, and there'll be many other opportunities to thank her, but, and thank you to the Sherborne School Committee, so we'll set to work, it's always a good time to be able to look at our systems and think about how we might be able to do business differently.
And Frank, would you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion, we have Greg beyond, is that something that needs to be moved?
I don't, you can certainly make the motion, I don't know if it needs to be as formal as that, but, yeah.
Okay.
So, if you need a motion, the motion is to, to have Greg Garland be on the Business Manager Task Force as a representative from the Sherman School Committee.
Wait a second.
If we need a motion, I'll second, but if we don't need it, then why are we doing it?
Well, I'm not really sure, it is a.
Yeah, I don't think we really.
If we don't, then I would rather not.
Okay, then never mind, then we'll.
Yeah, and then the other, the other piece of that is that when we actually form the search committee, Mrs. Hanlon, I would love to, it will, obviously we'll expand that, so if that's okay with you, I'd love to bring you in at that point, when we actually have the search committee, that'll be the point where we're looking at applicants, working on the job description, that kind of thing, is that of interest?
Yeah, yeah, definitely, because I was on the search committee when we brought Christine in, so it was, and it was really interesting, and I would, I'd like to do it again if I can, you know, if the schedule works out, so when that happens, yeah.
Was anybody else here on that committee?
Was anyone else on that?
Like, anybody else?
No, no, it was when Chris was hired.
So the task force, the nature of that in terms of timing and what, what am I getting?
So we would look to, we would look to convene pretty, pretty quickly actually because, as I put out today, the Accounts of Payable and Accounts Receivable Clerk of 30-plus years to the region has announced her retirement, and that's Betty Canigliaro, and she will be retiring actually in January, so this task force will convene pretty quickly because we want to be able to consider the landscape of changes potentially in the business office, so you'll hear from me within the next week or so.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Will you on Thanksgiving?
Well, we could, that's right, you know. Right, that's right, you can bring the apple pie, and then Mrs. Hanlon will be sure to bring you in on the committee and the broader search committee.
Right.
Perfect, thank you so much. In addition, just a couple points from the, from the memo actually, for the first time ever in the history of the public schools of Dover and Sherborne, we have a school nurse leader, which you'll recall, we discussed a bit at the October 21st joint meeting, and we discussed that position, and I want to make sure I actually put sort of the official announcement in here, Carolyn Genotasio, who has been our nurse at the region, at the high school in particular, for several years, and as you can see from her mini bio here, brings a wealth of experience to the position, and it's really wonderful to finally have a nurse who's overseeing all of the school nurses for the, in the entire school system. Carolyn was almost teary-eyed when this was decided because she's been asking for, for years, she has felt the need for this and really feels like this is going to deliver a better product, better service delivery model for our students, so thank you so much for, for that, and to the Advisory Committee on Extra Duties that also worked through that as well. You've included in your packet, you'll see the actual job description for the school nurse leader, if you're interested in looking at that if you haven't already, and in addition, and really for some of the benefit of some of the Sherborne School Committee members, including your packet, you'll also find the class of, the Dover Sherborne High School Class of 2013 Alumni Survey results, and we want to make sure we included those results for you in their entirety in the packet, so you'll, I think that's exactly the document you hand us on right there, Mr. Hook, thank you.
I was looking at that, there was two that, I didn't see the answers come through long.
Yeah, because those may have been, were they open response questions?
I don't think so, it says, "Did you require remediation or remedial coursework upon beginning college?"
Okay.
No answer.
Yeah, that was, should have been on there, so what we'll do is.
Then, then I think it was yes or no, you probably, there was probably part of an open response, and there was question number 19, well, I guess that was an open response one, yeah.
Yeah, let me, let me check and see if we can repost that and send that tomorrow with all the responses, we did obviously truncate some of the, the way you could extract that data, actually you could at one point look at exactly who the respondents were and whatnot, which obviously we wouldn't provide publicly, but it was a, I think a fairly favorable survey, it was shared with all of the department chairs in an instructional leadership meeting at the high school, because the department chairs have long said at the high school that this type of survey really helps them in terms of, you know, looking at their curriculum and looking at areas where they may need to, yeah.
Is there any way to boost the response rate?
We, we.
About offering dollars or something?
We incentivized it, we actually gave out two $50 gas cards to the like 35th and 70th respondents or whatever, but we cert, I've been talking it up on my superintendent's roundtable show, and have been letting the graduating seniors from this year know that the survey's forthcoming, to please be sure to provide your personal email address, because I think sometimes when kids graduate, they're like, why are you, you know?
I think it'd be helpful for guidance as well as parents too, to be able to see this, do you recall what the response was to the remedial help question?
Yeah, yeah, I do, I remember it was no, minimum zero, virtually zero, yep. And you know, Mr. Garland, we'll actually make sure that's posted, post results somehow like on the website, because it would be helpful for parents.
Even making sure, making sure that parents know that it goes out, maybe parents could influence their kids to answer the.
Yeah.
Survey.
Sure. Well, we wanted to make sure it was included because you, you know, had asked and other members of the other committees had asked for sure about when those results would be available, and, and I also thought it'd be important to include something on the Parents' Social Norming Campaign, so we put a little piece in there as well, so those are really the highlights from my section, if there are any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Populard.
Our next Professional Development Day, our full day, is December 1st, and all of our educators will be engaged with John Doria from, in the morning session to talk about creating a culture of learning in collaboration with our administrators and looking at the impact on student growth and learning, so that session will be attended by the entire staff. In the afternoon, the elementary educators will be here at Pine Hill, looking at language-based strategies with Ms. Ann Larson, who is the consultant from Landmark, so I think that's a great next step for instructional strategies based on the morning session of how do we collaborate on student learning. I've included a sample of a physical education understanding by design unit so that you can see what these look like, I thought it was important for us to look at the team building section of the physical education, and what are the, the transfer knowledge and understanding for students that they need to play cooperatively alongside each other and respectfully in the school setting, it's, it's creating that culture of learning and how do we behave in school, and you can see what are the essential questions, what students will know and be able to do. So any other questions regarding the report or the meeting unit, certainly?
I'll say.
Maybe, very good.
Miss Green?
Just, you know, we've spent the last couple of months working with everyone in the transition process, it's gone very smoothly so far, everybody's doing a fabulous job, has sort of hit the ground running, which couldn't be any better, we focused in on a couple of things, working with the CPAC group to work on a parent survey as well as, I'm working on a staff survey, to just get a sense of how staff and parents are feeling about the transition this year, and making sure everyone feels supported and that they're getting the services that they need, as well as working with the CPAC group to update our website so that there's resources and information there on the website, the district's website for parents to find. So those have been our focus points for the last couple of months, as well as working with Mr. Bliss on my goals for the year and what we want to accomplish in our first year of the transition, but things are going really well.
Thank you.
Feedback's very positive.
Miss Teague?
Well, I think you all know what I've been working on, so we'll leave it at that, but I'll have an update for FY 15 at the December meeting. Concerning facilities, it's just a brief update as to some of the water issues we're having around the building, and so we're gonna do some repairs on the downspouts, and it will come out of the building maintenance.
Okay, and that's mainly the gym area of the new section?
And you'll hear, I think considerably more about drainage later this evening when we talk more globally about the capital request, but there, if you think of the drainage issues as sort of in multiple phases, so we have some general maintenance issues with downspouts and gutters, that kind of work that Chris refers to is about $1,500 in repair work, which can be easily covered through the operating budget, so that's sort of the triage, if you will, of some of our, our issues, but we'll have to talk a bit more about water flow as the night ensues.
So can I just ask, so then did yesterday's torrential rain, did that cause flooding and issues that just really show or showcase the issues?
Well, actually, I was gonna go out there around 4:30 yesterday, and then I thought, no, I don't think I will, but I'm, I'm sure there was water there, because I went out, you know, a few months back last year when it rained during the daytime, and definitely there was water coming up.
Yeah, we have, we have parts of the building where we literally, the water just cascades off the roof, and there's really, there's no drainage system, I mean, so it just is a deluge back there, and when we talk a little bit later this evening about the donations, we have an impending donation from a family in Sherborne to work on an, on an early childhood playground, and we've actually retained a consultant to help us with that project as part of the overall donation, and part of the concern there is that if we infuse a, a great deal of very generous dollars in, in building a really unbelievable early childhood playground in the rear of the, rear of the building, we want to make sure that the, all these other issues are satisfactory resolved, because it makes little sense to put a lot of money into, you know, the, as it were, the ground, the foundation of this playground if it's just gonna become a pond, for lack of a better term, so, it's a multi-phased, we'll talk a bit more about the donations, yep, thank you.
Okay, so, next I guess we have the extra duty instructional.
Yeah, so just by, by way of a little bit of background, you've certainly heard at the joint meeting, you heard, and for those, certainly for Mr. Hess and Mr. Garland, know what ACD, this Advisory Committee on Extra Duties, it is true that the ACD is a small group of educators and administrators who have the, the charge and the responsibility to really look at Appendix C in the teacher's contract, and if you look at Appendix C in the teacher's contract, there's like three pages worth of listed items from class advisors to quarrel director, I mean, you name it, it goes on and on, and that, it's really an all-encompassing list, and for the regional school committee in particular in recent years, and certainly predates me, I'm sure, it's been something of a, of a sticking point because what happens by way of the former, the old contract is, all of those positions every year can come up for review, so let's say you are the musical director for the high school musical, and there's a ratio assignment for every position listed, from the football coach to the music director to the senior class advisor to the SAT advisor to National Honor Society advisor, and everything else. Those, that Appendix C really touches the elementary schools so far on really two fronts, it's really around the curriculum leader roles that we know of at Pine Hill and at Chickering, and beyond that, there isn't a lot at the moment, now the school nurse leader kind of factors into that whole calculus now, and there has been, there has always been frustration that, how did those positions get added, and what were they weighted at, and why is this one worth this many ratios points, and this one's worth that, and the other thing, and it's been a little bit odd because those have been baked into each teacher's contract, and there's never been a process or even a protocol for any kind of a body to be able to look consciously and conscientiously at that list to say, hmm, why is this position weighted at this, why is this, why do we not have this position, why do we not have that position? In the new contract, the new educators' contract, it does very clear language that the ACD group will meet on a regular basis as needed to consider exactly these types of things that come up, so the ACD group has reconstituted, has quite a charge ahead of it, and has been already putting in countless hours, they recognize that it's a bit difficult because it's kind of like reupholstering the, the seats on the airplane mid-flight, trying to look at every position in the middle of a school year, because many of these things are already going, class advisors are running, people have already been in coaching positions, people have already done musicals and whatnot, so at the very end of this school year and into the summer, this group has actually committed to continue meeting and to look at every single position, to determine if the actual ratio weighting is commensurate with what the position is, because there's really a thinking, there's thinking that some, at some point when some of these positions came online, the student subscription to that may have been much greater than it is today, or it may be that the student's subscription has really shrunk, but the workload has increased, or some things are baked into that model that haven't run in years, and it's, it's been kind of a mess, so this ACD group meets, we've already met several times, they looked at the school nurse leader, they then looked at what positions in the region's budget did not run this year that are literally in the contract, and they last week sat down to take this $9,200 worth of money that's really should have been in the regional budget, and they had before them requests from people that hold various positions to reconsider the ratio assignment, so you might be the student council advisor and you're paid at four ratio points, but you're requesting that that go up to five, or five and a half, or seven, or whatever it is. Just to frame this a little bit, the ACD met last week, we had $33,000 worth of requests before the committee, which means that a number of people at the region believe that what they're doing for their particular position, and it could be any position, is deserving of, of either money that hasn't been awarded to it, or more money based on the existing ratio point. It's important, I think, to note that in the last few contracts, each ratio point has been worth $1,396.02, $1,396.02, that rate will, has climbed this year by 1.6%, which remembers sort of the COLA that's attached in part to the matrix, salary matrix, so that ratio assignment goes up each year of this contract by 1.6%, so it goes from $1,396.02 to $1,418, to $1,441, to $1,464, something like that, over the life of the contract, each ratio point continues to increase. That was a big deal for the teachers to have that ratio be able to increase, because for the last couple of contracts, it's been flat, it stayed at $1,396.02 and it did not change. So at the, you know, for several years, there's been discussion about the, the importance and the relevance of the fine arts in the public schools of Dover and Sherborne, both visual, think of fine arts as visual and performing arts, and for Kelly Hodge, who's really our lone teacher, for all intents and purposes at Pine Hill, we have over the past few years brought Kelly to give Ms. Hodge together with our two, actually 1.8, teachers at Chickering to work on some curriculum work, you've, you've learned of some of that work, and then we've brought in the music teachers from the middle school and the performing, and the, and the visual arts teachers as well, but there's no cohesion, and I think anyone at this dais would know that the fine arts in Dover and Sherborne are a very prominent force, it's very much baked into the fabric, I think, of our two communities, so the ACD sought to consider whether at this point, if you think of the high school configuration, we have what are called department chairs at the high school, many of you know of them or know of the construct, they're in this Appendix C, they're under this umbrella of the ACD, think of it as three buckets in the, in this Appendix C, there are instructional leadership positions like curriculum leaders, curriculum supervisors, department chairs, there are positions extracurricular, all the advisors, and then all of the coaches, there's like an athletic bucket, an extracurricular bucket, and this instructional leadership bucket. So the ACD sat down at one of its meetings and said, you know, it, it's probably time to consider a department chair level position, this would be the first of its kind, a department chair position that would span our, our three school districts. This would be the first of its kind, a department chair position that would span our three school districts to afford some cohesion to the fine arts. So you'd have, because at the moment, Kelly Hodge is sort of unto herself at Pine Hill. We have two music teachers and one art teacher at Chickering. We have .8 art teacher, Pine Hill and Sarah Richards. We have a series of visual and performing arts teachers at the region. But there's truly no one who's overseeing this in terms of supervision, evaluation, curriculum development, curriculum revision, assessment development, exhibitions, system-wide choral and instrumental performances, even all of the musicals and all the productions we do. There's no point person in our school system. Where does it fall? It's catch as catch can. It's literally Karen through her office will grab some of the curriculum instruction issues. The secretaries in the central office will become sort of point people for some of the musical questions as they relate to the rental of the facility. Sometimes we'll have a music teacher and art teacher who will desire, on his or her own accord, to put together an exhibition or a system-wide choral concert. But it's, there's no point person for that. So you might ask yourself, where do these people sit? Under what department are they at the region? Where are these people, where do they reside? Visual and performing arts teachers. At the moment, they reside under a department called Living Fine and Technical Arts, L F T A. So L F T A is a repository for visual arts teachers, performing arts teachers. Engineering teachers fit in there, the foods teachers fit in there, the technology teachers fit in there. It's this kind of good department, but kind of a repository for seemingly disparate content areas. This proposal seeks to have a department chair, again, the first of its kind, that would be a fine arts department chair for the public schools, for the three districts. So that you understand a department chair at the high school receives a stipend and has an 80% teaching load, 20% release time. So if you are, if Mrs. Hanlon's the history department chair at the high school, she teaches four courses. She has the equivalent of a section during your day when you can do some of your work as the chair of your department. So it's an 80-20 split. So when the A C E D group said, hmm, what would the cost of a fine arts director position be? Well, for whomever that person may be, it would be 20% release time, and it would be the stipend. The total cost of that is in the neighborhood of $24,000, something like that, is what, at the moment, department chairs and sort of curriculum supervisors at the middle school, that's kind of the cost. It's a release time is baked into their schedule and a stipend. So on the backside of the memo here, what I tried to present is the current configuration. So you can see that currently we have two positions. Neither happens to affect either elementary school at the moment, but just to provide the landscape, we have a living fine and technical arts department chair who services grades nine through 12. So this is the memo that is in your packet. The person has .2 release time, it has a 5.5 ratio points. So the cost of that for the stipend is $7,925.76. Position two is we have a L F T A curriculum leader at the middle school who oversees the same kinds of courses, performing arts, visual arts, engineering, and technology. It's grade six through eight, obviously, no release time in that particular model at the middle school, and it's paid at a lesser ratio rate. Again, the history of this is unknown to really, when these came online is sort of anyone's guess. We could do some research to figure it out. But, so the stipend cost is $61.24.46 to the middle school budget, to the regional middle school budget. So the subtotal for stipends is 14, a little over 14,000. Then you have to factor in the release time for each of those two individuals. So at the moment, the cost to the regional school budget for these two people, that, by the way, do absolutely zero for either elementary school, unless they want to of their own volition, is $30,000, $30,052.22. What we're proposing is a fine arts department chair position, K through 12, with a 20% release time, 5.5 ratio points. And what this would have is a cost share by district for that piece of it, for the stipend piece. It would be 50% to the region, 25% Sherborne, 25% Dover of that $7,925.76. And then position two does something very creative. It actually takes the computer, technology, and engineering courses at the region, and it allows them to be more logically under a different umbrella, like called Technology Engineering Regional Coordinator. And I parenthetically reference that we have one other similar position at the region to that. It's called the Health and Wellness Regional Coordinator. It's held by Dara Johnson, and she is the only person who's a six through 12 person. So you may say, do you have a department chair, say, in foreign language at the region that does both middle school and high school? No, the middle school has a curriculum supervisor, the high school has a department chair. The middle school has this, the high school has that. The only person who's the six-12 hybrid is Dara Johnson and this wellness coordinator. So this would be the second such instance. But it would allow for greater synergy around technology, engineering coursework, and curricular consideration in this construct.
But not for Pine Hill?
Not yet.
Just for six through 12?
Not yet, not yet. But that could be the next, you know, that's something that we may want to very much roll in moving forward. We need for there to be a greater emphasis on STEM initiatives in a K-12 construct. This, we think, is the first step towards getting there. We, you know, it's sort of what can we, we have special ed reorganization, we have finally the school nurse leader, we're looking for the fine arts department chair. And it's really what we've done here, so it's a good question, but probably something to look at maybe next year. This time, maybe next year. But what we've attempted to do in the color-coded section is to break down that there is a greater cost to the proposal overall. Because essentially, what would happen is you wind up with two positions with this release time. And so the cost for the two positions is $47,851.52, that's stipends and release time and everything combined. Each, each share for each elementary school is the, is the school district's share of the stipend and a portion of the share of the release time attributable to the fine arts department chair.
Can you explain that? Because it doesn't seem to add up that way.
Sure. So the, in the proposed, the fine arts department chair stipend position would be $7,925.76. So each of the schools would own 50%, 25%, 25% of that.
But that says .2 release time, 5.5 ratio points, is that total not?
No, that's, that, no, the 5.5 ratio points is just the $7,925.76. So it's $8,000 of a stipend.
What's the .2, how much is the .2 release time?
About 18, so it's a total of about $18,000 in release time? I think we're using 16, we were using $16,000 figure. So if you take 16 to 25% of the $16,000, plus the 25% of the stipend, is the share for each elementary school. So you may say, in very, in very sort of crude terms, you may think, well, but understandable terms, you may say, well, does that just help, does that just sort of buy us, the cost to us, to the Sherborne budget would be about $5,900? Is it just an evaluation? I mean, is it just the kind of thing where Dr. Brown or Mr. McGarty now will not have to evaluate necessarily Kelly Hodge, because Kelly may now be evaluated by the fine arts department chair? No. What I actually did is I put together a job description, which is stamped draft, which is about three pages long of what a fine arts director does in a school system. And I wanted to just share this with you so that you'll have, be able to sort of frame it a little bit. So you can get a sense, and this is similar to what Wayland has, Weston has, Nada, Framingham, Ashland, in a, in a fine arts director. So it's more than just someone to do evaluations.
So we're lucky that this year we don't have any reductions in staff, and that's great.
Right.
I know that there's grumbling that perhaps other places, district-wide, there will be. So this is adding more administrative, more administrators, at a time when potentially the number of teachers is being reduced, at least system-wide. So how is that, how do you sort of justify that?
Right. So this isn't administrative, this person strictly resides within the teacher's contract. Department chairs don't.
But what Pine Hill is paying is really administrate, more administratively.
Curriculum coordination and articulation.
Yeah, just like your four curriculum leaders right now are, it's analogous to that. They're teachers who, for whom you pay a stipend in the teacher's contract.
But they're not teaching, that person probably would not be teaching in Pine Hill. They would just be coordinating, I haven't read the job description yet.
Right.
It just feels to me that it's, the point, even if it's just the point two, that still feels more administrative, even though technically they're teachers, it feels more administrative at a time when potentially the number of teaching points, or the number of, the number of teachers is being reduced in some places in the region, or perhaps us in the future. I just worry about getting a little top-heavy, like more department chairs and more.
It also begs the question, I think, living, fine, technical arts, that's mainly electives, right? For the most part?
For, not, it's electives that are baked into the graduation requirements.
Yeah. So I guess, it seems an odd place to start. It makes more sense to coordinate math across all schools, or English, or science, rather than fine arts. And I just can't imagine, I'd rather, if we had 6,000 bucks to spend, I think there are better ways to, better ways to spend it.
I don't know. I respectfully disagree, simply because it is actually an area where, remember, going back a few years, this is the group that, because they are isolates and largely in our districts, in the visual and performing arts, they don't have professional colleagues, they don't have colleagues with whom they work under the roof. So Sarah Richards, for instance, is a very talented art teacher at Pine Hill. Until she was brought together with her colleague, with the visual arts teachers from the other two school districts, there was not a lot of cohesion or collaboration going on, because she was an island. She, Kelly Hodge is largely, so this group.
She's collaborating now, though.
As much as we can, but it isn't, it definitely is not as cohesive, and this is absolutely no disrespect to the office of the assistant superintendent, simply that the assistant superintendent cannot necessarily oversee all of the K through 12 efforts. Because keep in mind, it was first, the first group of teachers to come before us to say, hello, can we please, you know, coordinate, get together as a K-12, were our music teachers. It was right on the heels of music that our visual arts teachers said, okay, we're feeling, you know, a little left out. We're feeling like, what's happening is, the sixth grade Kathy Semino, who receives all the sixth, most of the sixth graders at the middle school, had really, as a visual arts teacher, no conception before, a couple of years ago, of what, really, of what was taught for visual arts by Sarah Richards or by Sue Palatiera at Chickering. They just, they were, they just, it had not come together. So this is, I think it's the beginning of, and even at the region, the department chairs, it's an interesting point, Greg, but the department chairs at the region, some of them say, oh, I'd love to be a department chair six through 12, it makes a lot of sense. And others have said, if you move in the direction of the six through 12, count me out, you know, I have no desire to, which is fine, we can, you know, count them out, but I have no desire to oversee a six through 12 department. So we're trying to move in a direction that's logically following what the educators themselves have pledged to over the past few years.
That implies that for every department there, we could look, we could look to something like this for going forward.
I don't think so. I think what will actually happen is that at the region, that some department chairs that are at both buildings will begin to kind of collapse into one. Keep in mind of what this does at the region, right now, there's a living, fine, technical arts person in each building. This ultimately collapses those and becomes one person who's the L F T A, and then the other person becomes the fine arts department chair in a broader context.
And also, I think that with some of these things, like the music and the art, you almost have to have a K to 12, you don't have a critical mass of people to supervise. You know, with the math, you have much larger numbers at all levels.
That's what I meant, yeah, that's exactly it. It's sort of like they're, they're parties of one or two. And to, and to your point, it's valid, but, so there's no way we're reducing teaching positions at the region. If anything, the regional school committee has actually asked the administration to consider adding positions because of larger class sizes at the region. So, good point. And at Chickering, the Chickering enrollment will be off by almost 50 students next year. So it is true, there'll be some reductions in class, most likely in classroom sections. But with that may also come consideration around reducing, at the moment, Chickering has a 1.8 FTE allocation for the performing arts, so it has a 1.0 teacher and a .8. 50 students less next year could literally translate to that going from 1.8 to maybe to 1.6, could. And if that happens, and if perchance the teacher there applied for this position, or Ms. Hodge, or anyone, could apply for the position internally, it actually could wind up keeping people, teachers, it could wind up keeping people whole, because ultimately, the offset to a declining enrollment is a reduction. This represents an opportunity for a teacher to test the waters a little bit with supervision and evaluation. And also, keep in mind, the only people in the teacher's contract who can evaluate are department chairs. Curriculum leaders, as they exist at Pine Hill, have zero evaluation role and responsibility. Department chairs at the high school literally contribute to that, and that's where we're trying to kind of move the culture and climate.
So I, to, one sort of a point, it seems to me, and this is more regionally speaking, but if it's gonna be six through 12, I think it would really behoove to have the schedules mesh so that the .2 can be more effective, because if half the time is sort of juggling in between. And the other thing is, I have to say, I, once again, I like the idea of having K through 12 coordination, and I understand the island concept, and that makes it a tough situation. I also know that it would be great for the technology, certainly at the region, to be bolstered. I think that that will help. I think, I think I like the concept. I think my stumbling block is $6,000 for that. And I'm, it's still unclear to me, even looking, briefly looking at the job description, really where the value is, the $6,000 or the value is for Pine Hill. And maybe it's down the road further? But I'm having a tough time with that figure, I think, right now.
Well, I figured that that would be something, and that's why I wanted to put the job description together, because I, I sense sometimes that there may be thinking that it's really, it's an evaluation role. It can, at the first sort of sniff test, it can appear, you know, administratively heavy, that kind of thing. Also, just, you know, remind, just administratively, that the administrators in our system, despite maybe the, in the court of public opinion, maybe, among some factions in the towns, work really hard. And I would say, over and over, we're not top-heavy administratively. Just reminding everyone, you know, you have one superintendent for three school districts, you have one assistant superintendent for three districts, you have one business manager for three school districts. So I would just take issue with that, simply because I don't agree that we're administratively top-heavy. That's from a very.
But you base it on, I mean, if you looked at dollars.
Even based on dollars.
Okay.
I mean, I would, so, so I feel like it would be, that's why I wanted to just roll this out, and because certainly tonight, we're not, we don't need to decide anything. We wanted to not roll out a fiscal '16 budget. It would have been a little bit, I think clandestine of us to roll out a budget and then like next month say, hey, by the way, you know, we'd like you to ponder this. And I don't think we need any decisions tonight, but we wanted to responsibly say that the budget model speaks to this. If there isn't support for it, it can be backed out, but that's kind of the exercise. And I think that's what's great about having this kind of committee.
What would you think would be the, the feeling from, well, because you haven't met with the other committees yet, is if we were to look at a different proportion of the cost share? For instance, let's say that we were looking, let's say, 3,000 for us, 3,000 for Dover, and the remaining 18 for the region. It just seems like, from the actual use, you know, you think of the programs they have, all the musicals, a lot more coordination required, perhaps a lot more of after-school things and band.
Right.
They might get more use out of it.
Use of the position.
Yeah.
It seems to me like a little bit of collaboration, you could do it with just people getting together and talking about what they're doing. I think we've made choices to, one of the reasons we have budget issues, if we've made choices, we've made choices to pay our teachers almost more than anybody else. And on average, certainly, it's higher, because we have so many people that have been here for so long. We've made choices to have small class sizes, although that's less of a choice now. So when we make these really expensive choices, it doesn't give us the flexibility to do things that make perfect sense. It would, it would make sense to have everything aligned across the region. But it just seems like 6,000, I know you disagree, $6,000 can be used in different ways when you talk about everything else that's so.
And I, I think it's not really, I think the apportionment formula could be looked at. I think that that's a valid point. I think that it's tough sometimes, Greg, and you raise a good point, but it's also tough when we say, okay, what are we trying to extract from the position? And some curricular cohesion, some program coordination, some supervi- And some curricular cohesion, some program coordination, some supervision would be really nice of, of this. And we back our way, and having sat on the negotiating team, we know that the department chair role is like the only kind of sacrosanct area that someone has evaluation, you know, capability. And do we wish that were different in the contract? Yeah, I mean, it would be great, you know, like maybe in the next go-around, if the curriculum leaders at the schools could begin to move in that direction, that'd be, that'd be great. But at the moment, we're sort of backing into and trying to make some baby steps in a broader system-wide construct, that you're right. Sometimes short-circuit some efficiencies because there's always that, the way we're set up.
Yeah, the structure.
The structure, sometimes, you know?
I do thi, yeah, sorry, one second. I do think the coordination has a great deal of value. I, I just think the proportion is different. Frank, you have something?
I was just curious, in the, the proposed budget that you brought to us-
Sure.
Is this number already in, in there?
It is, it is, it is.
So that's something to be thought of as well. So it's not an issue of looking for an expensive position, it's like, okay, what can we do with that money?
Right.
What else would you do? And you're coming to us saying, this is what you think is the best use for these resources.
Right. I, I think that what's, what's great about this, when, when we met with chairs and we've heard from the school committees about, I think is a consistent message around, we'd like to hear from administration on some different ideas, like, and I, the person who comes to mind is really Claire Graham at the region, who's been really good and I think vocal about saying, is this really, are we hearing everything? Are you just kind of giving us like bare bones to get by? Or are we really, let's talk about the ideas, let's talk about vision. It may not be that we can sort of pull the trigger on everything all at once, but we're trying, you know, we're happy with the special ed reorganization, we're pleased with the school nurse leader, we're trying in a, from a 30,000, from a cruising altitude of 30,000 feet to steer our system to act regionally, even though we're, we're not set up in that way, you know? And so therefore, we feel administratively, like it's very important to say, here's an idea, this is the right venue to talk about it, and, and let's see where, where it flies. I will tell you that in our two communities, in the fine and performing arts subculture of our two communities, that's really alive and well, this has been sort of floated a little bit, you know, just the idea of, wouldn't it be great if? And there's just, there's huge support in our, in the two communities for increased collaboration and cohesion of the fine arts in our two, because they're huge. I mean, the programs are even huge in the summer, that, that our kids are attracted to a lot of our performing arts programs. So there's a lot of support out there for it.
Well, in general, sure. I mean, I support it in general, but when it comes down to the-
Yeah, yeah, in general.
Numbers.
Agreed.
And the advisory committee on extra duties, that's all regional people, right?
I'm sorry?
The advisory committee on extra duties, that's all regional people?
It is. So at the moment, so we bring people on-
They're happy to have the eligibility of the chair, right?
They're, they're, well, they'd actually like for the regional school committee to provide more money to support the $33,000 in requests that were advanced, and, but they were really good when we ultimately said, you have a budget of $9,200 of positions that weren't run, so you, you need to take 33,000, you need to fund 9,200, and that's the end of the game. They were really thoughtful and professional about that, and they made some tough choices regarding their colleagues, where they said, this club is worth this, and I'm sorry, this one we can't fund. This one is worth it, and I'm sorry, we can't fund this. So they're, they're really approaching, I think, the, the task pretty thoughtfully.
But would it be interesting if we could revisit the allocation? You know, I think that may be something we want to look at.
I have, I, I have one last comment. So the, what troubles me a little bit also is, Steve, something you've heard before, the teachers at the high schools spend on average 60% of their time in class. I think the teachers at Pine Hill spend all day in class. So department chairs, based on what I have seen for, spend about 50% of the time in class. They have on average about three free periods a day. And I think that's bad, in general. I know that's hard to change, but I have difficulty paying, paying a large share of somebody's salary who spends 50% of their time in class. I assume this would be the same for this, this chair, in terms of the .2 free time. So when we talk about free time, we're not talking, you know, DRs, my issue with DRs and things like that. It's not like they're teaching 80% of the time. They're actually in class 50% of the time.
Right. But they, exactly, and I know we've, we've had that, and I know there was definitely an appetite through the contract negotiation to kind of look at that, and, and it is right. You're, you're, you're right. It's a, it's a tough mountain to move, for sure. It's also tough when we think of something like this to almost say, what's the outlet? Like, in other words, if we, if we want someone to have some evaluative role, it's, it's almost like we're sandwiched to say, it's, it's got to be a department chair position because it's the only thing in the contract that touches evaluation, unless you're an administrator. That's the, so sometimes you're right, we're kind of hogtied by, by elements and, and factors that are tough.
Well, if you took, if you took 25% of their ratio points and not the release time, that may, that may change.
Right. And where the region is a little more accustomed to the configuration of what you speak, then a reapportionment might sit fine with them and better with Sherborne. So we can certainly look at that. So it's almost like a high watermark, like you, the budget you're going to open in a few minutes has this built in. So you can look at that through the mindset of, hmm, well, if this came down a little bit, or out entirely, if you didn't support it, then you could also run the numbers and see where you would land.
Yeah, and I think that, my only comment was, you know, I'd like to see this in the context of the budget, because-
Absolutely.
You know, if you're making cuts somewhere else and adding, I feel like this is really nice, but it's somewhat of a luxury to some, I mean, I know it shouldn't be, but it kind of is sort of a luxury, so we have to put it in the context of, well, what are we not doing? What are we cutting? Then what are we adding?
Totally. Yeah, absolutely.
We have a question. Is there already a tech, regional tech coordinator for three schools in place now or not?
For the three school districts? No, and this doesn't envision that, Vicki. This, this envisions a tech regional coordinator, regional being six through 12 only.
Okay.
So that doesn't touch-
So we don't have anybody that does the whole, all the school systems now?
Right. Now, we have, well, we have an IT director, but that's not a teaching role, that's a strictly administrative role, like Truitt's form. Good question.
May I also put my support behind the leadership aspect of looking at the arts, the fine and performing arts. For example, I was with the music educators K through 12 recently, and they were looking at their choral curriculum, their instrumental curriculum, and their ensemble curriculum. And I really could not give them enough advice about how to do that, so we're going to use an outside consultant. In my previous district, we had a director of fine and performing arts, and that person was able to provide that guidance for those educators. So while we rely on the great educators we have in those roles, I think a leadership position will only strengthen it.
And even though it looks like, you know, and, and keep in mind, like Ms. Hodge from Pine, she could legitimately and viably apply for this position and be granted this position. And she could become the fine arts department, of all things being allowed equal. And she could literally be the person who's working with this. It isn't presupposed that this is a person physically who teaches and lives at the region. And you know, this document was made, because it went in your public, your packet was made public, it went to the teaching faculty, and it's really interesting, a lot of, and even though it, it's something new and different at the region, even the teachers said, yeah, you know, it makes more sense instructionally, it makes more sense for kids.
But this, this supposes that it's not a, it's not an additional position, right? I mean, if you say she applies for the position, that means somebody else gets dinged?
What do you mean? No, I mean, so like if Kelly Hodge were released of some of the teaching, then a portion of Ms. Hodge's salary is charged off to the other districts, because they own a piece of that release time, that 20%, she's released. That means we would look for 20, we would look for someone to replace her 20% teaching, because we need her to teach. But dollar for dollar, that's why we had to look at this of the cost of the whole position, sort of notwithstanding from whence the person comes, from whichever district, because it really could be anyone. There's no saying, oh, this is a regional teacher, because they usually are, you know, department chairs. In fact, I think it would be pretty cool to say, we have a department chair, and it happens to be an elementary teacher, who's a department chair. That's really pretty innovative, and not something that is really common in a lot of school districts. I think it'd be a real feather in our cap to have that happen here, set up as three districts. And I think it speaks volumes to the commitment of our communities to the arts. So.
Okay, so I guess that you will sort of look over some of those-
Apportionment.
Oh, numbers, oh, excuse me. Yes.
I just want to make a comment about the apportionment piece of the conversation.
Yes.
Ultimately, the dollars are all coming from the same place, whether it's charged to Pine Hill or the region at 20% and 60, 20, 20, 60, or whatever. I mean, I get that you're trying to get the value to the district based on, for Pine Hill, based on how much time is spent here. But if you look at the superintendent, or any of the positions that are shared, it all evens out eventually, so the haggle over 5% allocation just seems, all the money's coming from the same place, and it's all going to the same place, so it seems like extra work. It's something that's come to me for sitting in a lot of the joint meetings, or the region. The taxpayers are the taxpayers, and, and if for every, for this position, if, if it's a little less time at Pine Hill, you're getting it from a different administrative position that's shared, you're getting more time sometimes from them, so it just-
I would say that you're absolutely right, except the school budget continues to go up more than the rest of the town's budget, so you would have to say, could you afford it at all, to do it at all?
Right, and find the position at all is a different question, but going back and reading the 5% here or there, it's-
Well, so if we said, but if we said, if we didn't object, and we said, sure, then everybody else says, sure, then you've got a new position, and we, and you get this creep that, that, I mean, this, this unsustainable eventually.
I, I'm not arguing for or against the position, just spending a lot of time discussing how to allocate them, I guess it's-
Yeah, I, I got it. But I, I can't resist. No, I can't resist, I'm going, that guy, you're going to remove him. No.
Did the region, did it support it?
I think that this administrative team has been really thoughtful about the budget. So if you look at, you know, the, the proposed budget before you tonight, at, at the in-district operating percentage increase, and then you factor in the special ed, I mean, it's, I think we as a team, I can't speak for all the teams that predated us, have tried to be really mindful of guidance and where the towns are, and declining enrollment, and taking a hard look at different aspects. I mean, could we, and we will continue to scrub, but we're not putting before committees, you know, 4%, 5%, and 6% budgets, and we have school committees saying, well, your, you know, your enrollment's off by 10% or 12%, how can that be? You know, both this budget and Chicaring's budget for next year, with, with special ed included, will be in, in the negative territory. That's, that's the budgets we're putting forward, so.
I couldn't, I couldn't agree with you more, but you, you're in a tough situation.
Agreed.
You know, you've-
Yeah.
Done a great job.
No, I mean, it's the team, I think it's done, yeah, no, you're right. Thank you. Sorry to-
So I guess, which brings us to the budget, preliminary budget.
Right, well, that's a nice segue. Ms. Rollis, we have a gift for you.
Oh, great. Do you have my readings?
Yeah, a little light reading.
I have the street that you have.
Yeah.
Oh, that may-
Thank you. I think you have enough, Vicki, if you don't, let us know. Okay. So, thank you, Sherborne School Committee, and thank you in particular to Christine and to the business office, delivering a budget before Thanksgiving is actually something that, it's, it's pretty tough to, to deliver, but we actually feel better that, you know, this, at the end of this week, beginning of next week, the regional budget will go out the door. So we'll wind up with, with a couple of budgets out before, or really ready before Thanksgiving, which is good, you know? So thank you, Chris, and, and the business office.
My dogs.
Chris does her best work at her dining room table, I've found. So as we did last year, and I know many of you on the committee have had these talking points, but I think optically, and for public, for the public consumption, it's important to do a little bit of walkthrough on the talking points. So in tab two of your binder, we'll take it from the top. Concurrent with presenting this fiscal year 2016 budget, we seek to remind school committee members, Sherborne advisory, and Sherborne taxpayers, that the town of Sherborne received 1.87% more Chapter 70 state aid in fiscal year 2014 than in fiscal year 2013, and the final receipts of $525,258 received in July of 2014 were beyond what was originally budgeted in the state level, at the state level fiscal year 2014. Chapter 70 receipts for fiscal year 2015 for Sherborne are projected to be at $545,223. Concurrent with presenting this fiscal year 2016 budget, we seek to remind the same parties that Pine Hill ended fiscal year 2014 with an operating surplus of $74,277 that rolled into the town's free cash. The turnback of nearly $75,000, or 1.3% of the fiscal year 2014 operating budget, was comprised of $25,992 in salary accounts and $48,285 in operating expense accounts. Concurrent with presenting the fiscal year 2016 budget, we seek to remind the same stakeholders that the town of Sherborne received more than expected revenue from the state in the form of circuit breaker reimbursement in fiscal year 2014, keeping in mind that that's based on fiscal year 2013 expenses. Circuit breaker reimbursement for fiscal year 2014 was 75% of claims over the threshold of $40,512 per student. This resulted in the town of Sherborne receiving $474,564 versus the budgeted $235,788, or 40%. Circuit breaker reimbursement. Circuit breaker reimbursement for fiscal year-
So on that, am I to understand then that we, that they received $238,776 more than they were anticipating?
Yes, yes. Circuit breaker reimbursement for fiscal year 2015, based on fiscal year 2014 expenses, we always like to remind you of that, because it's sort of based on prior year expenses, and anticipated reimbursement rate of 72% is $458,634. This proposed budget was built with a watchful eye on the state of the Commonwealth's financial health. Although we are not largely dependent on Chapter 70 that flows from the state, said funds are certainly part of our overall financial model. Accordingly, Governor Patrick's plan to trim $325 million in spending from the $36.5 billion state budget announced the week of November 10th caught our eye and deserves our attention. Such mid-year cuts are referred to as 9C cuts. In every, in very early November, the Patrick administration held a briefing to disclose the gap, which they say is forming in part due to the likelihood of illegally required reduction in the income tax rate in January from 5.2% to 5.15%. In mid-October, the Patrick administration stuck by its fiscal 2015 revenue estimate while flagging areas where the state faced revenue exposure. This projected budget considered Sherborne advisory's guidance of 1.5% or $101,197 in allowable increases inclusive of general education, Pine Hill special education, and regional out-of-district special education costs. This proposed budget is responsible and reasonable, given that we do not anticipate an enrollment fluctuation with a projected fall 2015 opening of 365 students compared to our 372 student enrollment. This proposed budget is faithful to level service guidance in maintaining 19 classroom sections supported in the 2014-15 school year, given our relatively stable enrollment across the 14, 15, and 15, 16 school years. Greg?
Can you, can you tell me what level service is?
Sure. So literally, what we mean by this is, given where we are with our enrollment, we would have the same number of classroom sections that we are operating currently. So we're proposing for next year that our service operation does not bear witness to any kind of draconian reductions, that fundamentally, the services that are provided to students this year will be provided to students next year.
So it's referred to later, but you mean that in terms of classroom?
Right. This proposed budget ma, in this context, yes. Because I think I know where you're going. I'm anticipating the question. Oh, see, I can read your mind. This projected budget maintains the highly valued and contributory assistant principal at its current .6 appropriation, but aligns 70% of his salary with the administrative salary line, and 30% will be expended to the REAP grant. In the 14, 15 school year, you'll recall, 60% of his salary was aligned with the administrative salary line, and 40% was expended to the REAP grant. The increase to val- The increase to valuation and general oversight responsibility stemming from the special education reorganization, coupled to decreasing REAP grant, require this realignment. This proposed budget is responsive to both shifting special education populations from Pine Hill to the middle school, as well as to the general shift in, as well as to general shift in placements. This proposed budget encapsulates expansion of the FLESS program to nine total sections inclusive of grades K1 and 2. The re, the teaching assignment for this, for this position increased from .4 FTE in the 2014-15 school year to a .7 FTE in the 2015-16 school year. This increase is $17,023. This proposed budget reflects additional appropriation of approximately $24,100 for additional English language learner instructional support. This need stems from a slight increase in the number of ELL students matriculating at Pine Hill, a greater number of students entering the school at the beginner level, and the realization that we are not providing the required amount of instructional time for the students at the beginning level. This proposed budget includes a total of $39,160 for technology spending, with an eye toward restoring technology expenditures to a level in place some six years ago, towards acknowledging that DSEF no longer supports technology grants. In support and spending $39,160 for technology, our per pupil technology cost is about $107. This proposed budget provides $15,000 for extraordinary maintenance. This proposed budget reflects a fully ratified educator's contract spanning 2014 to 17. This proposed budget is faithful to the retirement longevity language in the recently ratified educator's contract in providing for five retirement confirmation placeholders, in addition to the known longevity payments for eligible educators. This proposed budget captures 25 percent of the out-of-district coordinated salary in the special ed teachers line, as Pine Hill benefits from out-of-district case management stemming from the special ed reorg. This proposed budget includes increased funding in the principals' equipment expense line for furnishings and equipment deemed unsafe. For instance, $7,000 is allocated to begin a multi-year shelving replacement campaign in the library as the existing units cannot be moved, as they are unsteady and therefore pose a safety concern when moved. This proposed budget reflects a reduction of approximately $8,900 in special education budget lines from summer programming and contracted services as a result of closer scrutiny of actual services required by students' IEPs. This proposed budget calls for the increase of the school psychologist from .4 FTE to a .6 FTE at a cost of approximately $18,000. This need stems from an increase in student testing required of new and matriculating students. This proposed budget calls for the decrease of .2 FTE in the guidance counselor. Given the changing demographic of our students and the increased need for testing and other services unique to the role of the school psychologist, coupled with declining enrollment over the past six years, administration believes that a .2 FTE guidance counselor to be sufficient. This proposed budget reflects a salary matrix in which the average step additional service year cost is approximately $4,324. This proposed budget was built with 10 anticipated lane changes.
Do we ask questions now or later?
Later. If you don't, are you okay with that?
But.
Will you remember what it is?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. I will too. This proposed budget includes Pine Hill's share of a system-wide fine arts department chair, the modest-cost share of 15.
And it wasn't even in quotes.
Do you like my editorializing? Affords our student, our school system, K through 12 instructional leadership of fine arts comprised of the visual and performing arts, in terms of curriculum evaluation and all school exhibits, concerts, and other symposia. The specific cost-sharing arrangement and the instructional rationale for the K-12 department chair position are explained in detail in the superintendent's memorandum dated November 12th. This, this budget reflects an estimated 16.4 percent increase in general ed student transportation. With respect to utilities, this proposed budget reflects a 51 percent increase in electricity costs, although we remain at a fixed contract cost until December 2015. No increase in anticipated, is anticipated in gas costs, and we remain at a fixed rate through June 2015. This proposed budget includes $33,000 for regular education textbooks, that's the line, which are largely consumables for various subject areas. The per pupil cost is about $90. With respect to out-of-district costs for Sherborne students, the projected $219,182 for Pine Hill age, that is ages 3 through grade 5, students who are out of district reflects known cases as of October and assumes a 3 percent tuition and 2 percent, excuse me, transportation increase. The projected $870,816 for regional age, grade 6 through age 22, students who are out of district placed reflects known cases also as of October and assumes the same 3 percent tuition, 2 percent in transportation increase. We approach this budget building exercise with an acute appreciation of the town's finances in full recognition of the need to provide level services in line with enrollment and with an overriding desire shared among all stakeholders to maintain a superior educational experience for all Pine Hill students. The administrative team has, through this proposed budget, put our best foot forward with the hope and expectation that rather than spending the next five months consumed in budget deliberations, we may be able to attend to the lofty goals set by the superintendent and the administrative cabinet revolving around teaching and learning. And before we actually open up for questions, if it's okay with Mr. Haas, I would like to just explain a little bit about the guidance counselor position. The, we have over the past few years, and it sort of syncs up with what I said to Mr. Garland before beginning this discussion, over the past several years, we have tried to look at every aspect, and it was through different financial times, not that times are great certainly, but certainly we've gone through over six years and ebb and flow to the town's finances and to our three districts' finances. We have literally looked at every aspect of the school operation, from specialists to secretaries, to custodians, to the assistant principal. We have reduced the art teacher, we've reduced library support, we've reduced nursing support, we've reduced the assistant principal. We have made these reductions not easily, and we feel as if, if we were asked the question, can we open up Pine Hill next year and can we function with a .8 guidance counselor? We can, is it our desired state? No. So, much like the discussion we had last year around, when we were chatting about the phys ed and health and whatnot, there is, and it's tough not to personalize it when you're a guidance department of one, so the contributions from Dr. Freeman to our students and families are immeasurable. There's just no denying that. The, we feel it important though, if for no other reason, to have, as uncomfortable as it may be, and I was on the phone with Dr. Freeman this morning at 7:00 AM, a little before 7:00 AM, he completely understands the need to have the discussion around every aspect of the school. He said, the school committee has done that over the past few years with every aspect, from its physical plan operation to administrative costs, to teaching positions, to support positions, to secretary, we have looked at everything. And I said, I said, Dr. Freeman, if we did not, because I will share, that among educators, and by educators I mean everyone in the teacher's contract, all 202.1 teachers, educators we employ, there is conversation around why certain people in certain positions are perceived as being in a safe harbor, home, hold harmless kind of arrangement, and there's chatter about that, even among the teachers who belong to the same contract, the same association. And I said, Dr. Freeman, as uncomfortable as it may be, I think it's important to publicly have the conversation with the school committee, and whatever the decision is, to be able to live with that, because, and, and if it's to keep our guidance counselor in place at a 1.0, we think that's a great decision, if, if it's affordable. But it's really important in the interest of, I think, full disclosure, to be able to say, we've looked at everything. We think that's our charge. If the school committee says, we would like for a guidance counselor to remain at 1.0, sort of notwithstanding, then that's okay, but I think in order to stop the chatter that may happen in faculty dining rooms or soccer sidelines, it's, albeit uncomfortable, important to have a thoughtful discussion about that here, and to make the decision, if, if the guidance, if the guidance counselor is to remain at 1.0 next year, we are quite content with that. But in the spirit of what we've done for the past several budgets, we just thought it really important to share that we have not left that role unturned either. Mr. Haas?
Are we open now to?
Yes, we are.
May I?
Go ahead.
So in terms of the enrollment, is the major driving factor for looking from 1.1 to .8, and that is based on the work that is currently being done by the guidance position?
So it's tough with guidance, as it's tough with a lot of instances, so, you know, when you look, for instance, at special education, and you could say, well, you know, our numbers may be down, but the complexity of cases might be quite different than what it was. So if we were to look at, there are two opposing forces. One is, you can look at Pine Hill's enrollment over the past six years and see a pretty marked decline. Conversely, you can look at Pine Hill's enrollment over the past six years and say, students are presenting with a lot more challenges and a lot more needs than they were six years ago too. So there isn't a direct correlation, in guidance, to your, to answer your question, to say, enrollment goes down, so the apportionment goes down. We just simply wanted to say that, in, in much the same way we looked at everything, that in trying to say that enrollment plays a part in the discussion around FTE allocations, it has to, and it has in every administrative post and every support post at the school, we felt we needed to as well.
So with that said, the work that's being done in the wellness committee?
Yep.
And the implementation of what is being planned and, you know, the social-emotional aspect of the student and providing, you know, better work for that, wouldn't, would that fall under the guidance counselor's position?
It would, could, and should, yes. And it also falls under our school nurse. So there are, there's no doubt about it, and that's, that's one of the things we wrestled with in saying, we have the huge initiative going towards challenge success, and, and even notwithstanding that initiative, the circumstances and some of the, the complexities of some of the cases that we're seeing in our two elementary schools supports the notion that we need as much support as we can in this area. But again, we felt like if we needed to have, and the only way to have that is in an open meeting, is to say, is it, is it our administrative, and you are ultimately the governors of the budget, to say, we support, even though we have declining enrollment, we are okay saying to the taxpayers and everyone, that we're, we're okay, you know, with keeping the guidance position 1.0, for reasons that are somewhat unrelated to enrollment. Student, the initiative.
So that, that is a question, with the, with this coming down from, from wellness and some of the other issues and so on. Is there extra work that if, if we don't have this .2?
Would have to go to someone else.
Somehow, is it, are we going to be able to implement some of those things at Pine Hill adequately to meet the needs of our students? Because ultimately, what we're talking about is potentially, potentially less service for our students, even though we're trying to hold a level service for our students.
So there's no doubt that Dr. Freeman and the role of the guidance counselor, he would play a role together with Ms. Fedor and all cadre of others in implementing anything that comes down from the challenge success initiative. There's no doubt about it. An absent of having the full-time counselor, something would flow to someone else, absolutely. So is that a, a statement in support of keeping it at 1.0? Yes. That is. Could we open the doors to our school next year with an 80 percent guidance counselor, four days a week, something? Yes, we can. Something will, something will give, and it's kind of the discussion we had last year around the health and phys ed, you know, it was, I, it was literally a couple of people on this committee who said, but something will not happen as a result of having, and that's true. It's critical.
No, but I wonder, I mean, there's something, are you making that choice? I, I feel like I'm getting mixed messages. It's like, we're doing this sort of to show you that we can, but we really need it. So I don't, I mean.
We, we want to bring this forward to be able to say, we have looked at every aspect of the school, and even with the person affected. Maury literally said this morning on the phone, I completely understand why that discussion would need to happen, it's happened for every aspect of the school.
But, but are you not sort of making it, I don't know what the difference in the dollars is, you're making some sort of a choice between him full-time and, and a, a fine arts chair?
No, because we're also asking for, we're asking for an additional school psych, section of a school psychologist, much needed as well. I mean, we have to look at things programmatically. I mean, it, it, having the fine arts department chair position, I think is, is an equally val, it's a valuable outlet for, for students and. One at all.
Can you, can you tell me, and I should know this, I guess, what's, what is the difference? Is one sort of under the sped budget? Are they both under reg, regular education budgets?
School psychologist?
Yeah.
So the school psychologist would really do a lot of the testing associated with, with special education, fair to say.
Yeah. It does fall under special education.
And the guidance counselor, that's why you, you really need, and I sent to the school committee, I sent you some material to look at around, what does a school psychologist do? Because I think if you don't kind of live it every day, you say, you know, the school psychologist has a lot more to do with data gathering and testing, that would not necessarily fall within, not only wouldn't necessarily, wouldn't fall within the drawer, I'm thinking of these things as compartments, there are two drawers, you have guidance counselor and you have school psychologist, and it's not that one excludes the other, they're not mutually exclusive.
Is it Maury psychologist though? Didn't he?
No.
Was it psychologist?
He has a doctorate in education. He's not a certified psychologist through the Department of Education.
All right, so.
Can I make us spell a point though? If the, if the school committee were to decide to go to the 1.0, I want to just refresh, we were at as far as needing advisory's number versus, we're way under advisory's number at this particular point in time.
So as far as the committee is concerned, this is something we can make some decisions on. Do you want to discuss some of the other things in here before we do that?
I don't want to move off this topic yet. I have a couple of points I want to make. There's, I've thought about this quite a bit, and I have a couple of different thoughts, but some of them have already been said. You know, one, one thing, a comment I just want to make about what you were just saying about, you know, the moving things around, you know, the needs are over here, so we need to kind of move things around, and I struggle with that whole idea of, you know, pieces of jobs, because in the private sector, they don't do that, so.
Oh, that's right.
So I, I struggle with that in the first place, and I feel like it's just, I, I know in education, that's the way it's done. I have a hard time with it, because people are people and they're whole and they're professionals. So you're talking about reducing Maury's role, and that's the only reduction piece of what you were talking about. Everything else is, you know, kind of moving things around, and then, oh, you know, the reduction is over here. And I do think, I look at, at Maury as a person and a, and a whole role, so that's something, I know I have to adjust to that, but I just need to express that I have a hard time with it, a real hard time. But, you know, I, I really wonder why every year we get to this point where we have to start making the teachers and the administrative, people involved in the school nervous, you know? I mean, why does this happen?
Nervous, you said?
Nervous, yeah. I mean, why does this happen every year? I understand in the years where we really have these tight budgets and, and everybody's pulling their hair out, and where's the money going to come from? Everybody's nervous. But it seems like every single year, even in a year where, I mean, you know, that you pull, pull the budget together, we're under advisory's, you know, requirement or what they would like to see. But we're still like, you know, putting that message out and scaring people and making people worry about their jobs, and I, again, that's just, you know, something I wish we didn't have to do every year, and I feel like we don't have to do it in this situation since we are under budget. But my most important point is, is a little bit more personal about, you know, that position in Maury and what he brings to Pine Hill. And it's not just a function of checking boxes and, you know, going through a spreadsheet and, like a lot of roles are today, including, you know, my own, and, you know, it's just the way of the world. However, this is a very special function that he, he provides for the school and for the students. And, you know, he does more than, you know, just nine to five dealing with the children. He's, he reaches out to the families, he, it's, it's a, it's a 24/7 job for, for a person like that, and for, and I think what he puts into it. So I, I just feel that he's brought so much to the school and the community that's not quantifiable. quantifiable. You know, he, he makes the kids feel safe and they can come to him easily. I, I know the kids love him, you know, and a lot of the parents do. I'm not saying they all do, but I think a lot of them do. The people who, who've had good experiences with him love him. And I'm, I'm one of them. I've had experiences with him and he's helped my children tremendously, tremendously. My sis, my, my daughter had some issues and he's helped out tremendously. But anyway, I, I just think he brings more than is easy to see. It's, it's, it's more, I just wrote some notes down because I was thinking about it. He, he has, he brings like things to kids, teaching them how to have more self-esteem and a place to come in and talk. And, you know, those are, those are elements of a position that is hard to, you know, compare to others. Like, this is more, we are, we're in more needed this than that, especially when it comes to like, you know, I understand we need a lot more testing in special ed, but we, we really need that kind of holistic approach to a child that he, he provides. And I, I just feel like, you know, he, this, this statement has to be made. Yeah, I understand every position needs to be looked at, but we need to understand what that position is all about as well. And I know that not everybody's interacted with them either.
No, and I think those are, you've raised some really valid points, for sure. Susan, I think one of the things, and it brings me back to a conversation that, you know, the Dover School Committee had a couple of years ago when they were looking, they have a 1.0 FTE school psychologist. And the committee really struggled with, I think, on two levels, understanding the position and then understanding why a 1.0, you know, was needed. It's tough because it's not like you could say, "We do not have enough students, so therefore, you know, a classroom teacher, a section can come offline." Not that that's easy, but it's, it's def, it's more, say empirically driven.
More tangible.
Right? It is. It's a little more concrete. It's, it's interesting, though, when you, and I, I think Maury is a consummate professional. When I chatted with Maury this morning, he said, "Steve, I, I would fully expect the conversation to be had." And in fact, I, I think it was almost like I was kind of waiting for the discussion to be had, because it is interesting when I have weekly meetings with some of the union leadership. And in a very respectful way, I mean, we have such a great relationship, but the question has been asked, "Why is, why is it always, the consideration is always immediately to classroom teachers?" Why, well, that's the, that's the perception, not that's, that's the reality. But does administrate, the question was asked a couple of weeks ago, "Does administration look at anything beyond, you know, just classroom teachers?" I mean, are you looking at administrative functions? Are you looking at, are you looking at special educators? Are you looking at specialists? Are you looking at? So there's always this kind of a little bit of a balancing act. And, and I, and I think that you're right. We are probably in a landscape here where this does not need to happen. I think this discussion did need to happen, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
Because if for nothing else, it, it validates where the position stands in the eyes of the school committee. And I think that's an important lesson, if that's ultimately the lesson.
Can I just say one, one quick, just one quick question? And I apologize that I can't remember, but didn't we reduce the nurse? Is it for this year? Was it?
The nurse's aide.
Nurse's aide.
Oh, right.
Right. So the nurse's aide position went away, as did the nurse's aide position at Chickering this year went away. Even though Chickering has about 100 more students in the building, that, that position went away at Chickering as well. The library aide went away at Chickering this year. This is the first year. The custodian position was reduced at, as well at Chickering.
But the other reason, the reason I was asking about the nurses, I was thinking, based on what Frank Hook had said before, with the wellness committee, and you were saying that it was the counselor and the nurse. So I was thinking, sort of as the, that whole piece, is it, were we making that, are we keeping that whole, or was that whole, or had that been reduced? But it sounds like the nurse's aide wasn't really part of that equation.
Oh, definitely not. The nurse's aide wasn't, no. I'm sorry if I made that un...
She would probably just give the nurse time to do those jobs.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Okay. So it does, in fact, but indirectly.
You know, the nurse's position this year, admittedly, and certainly Dr. Brown can attest to this, the nurses had some additional challenges this year because of our rental arrangement with the tech and ex-op collaboratives. That's, that's true to form, that those are more, those are students in the building, right?
How many kids?
What's the total number?
It was eight children in both classrooms, some with regular medical monitoring kinds of needs.
You mean eight in each or eight total?
Four in each, eight total.
Thank you.
Thanks for clarification.
Thank you.
But I think we, I think we really need to, though, focus on what Frank was saying also, with the increase and the, and the need for this kind of service, with the kids having so much more anxiety and they're, we're talking so much about stress. That's where he can help. And that's where I see a huge value of, you know...
I think it's a good life, it's a good lesson for our communities, too. We had a challenge success meeting this afternoon, a faculty meeting. Dr. Le Duke and I attended middle school faculty meeting this afternoon. And it's interesting, some of the middle school faculty members, you know, "Oh, we're hearing parents, you know, in sixth grade who are talking about the right courses to get their kid into, you know, X, Y, and Z school." And I, I chuckled to myself because we had a discussion with a family at Chickering a couple of weeks ago, and it was kindergarten and it was this, the strategizing, like, "How am I getting to Harvard?" kind of discussion. And that, that is something that I think as two communities, boy, where, where there's a lot of thinking that has to go on around that.
Definitely.
Okay, so the well of the committee here, do, do we want to, if we're going to give some advice to the superintendent, do we want to do it by item? Do we want to discuss this whole thing first and then make some suggestions?
I think Greg had questioned. I don't know.
Greg. I, I was just gonna, I had one more comment on that. I agree with Susan, that the fractional employment is hard to get your hands around, mostly because you, if you could say, "These are the things that he's not going to do," then you'd have some sense of value. But, but by the same token, there's 100 less kids, so it's, it's hard to...
It's tough.
And then another factor is, would he leave? Well, that's a big issue. And you can't know that, so...
Right.
Well, the other, you know...
A lot of intangibles.
One thing about that role, too, is that it goes from, he's with those kids from kindergarten till they graduate. So he's a part of their life for the whole, you know, six years that they're in the school. So if you kind of, you know, he's built up relationships, his position, and there's more than one, but it really does depend on the relationships he's building with, with the children and the parents, but mostly with the children. I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, no, no.
But, but I think it goes even beyond that. It's just the, the work, regardless if it's Maury or somebody else that would be in that position.
Yeah.
You know, I think that's where we're really also need to be true to, is both aspects, the person, but also the position. And it, and it sound, what the sense I was trying to get is, is the workload on the position going to be less? And by numbers of students, it could be a little bit less. By needs, it increases. By some of the programs, it increases with some of the things that we want to try to implement. And we're putting a lot of effort and time into, into the wellness program and, you know, dealing with some of the, the new issues that are, that we're, you know, trying to deal with, with stress and trying to improve not only the academics of our students, but also their social, emotional, and health issues and welfare. And, you know, somebody has to take that into account at, at Pine Hill School.
Right.
Is, it, would that fall under the guidance position, whether it's Maury or somebody else? Does that fall under the guidance position? And I think that's somewhat how we have to look at it as well. And the answer is, that's where it should fall, as well as the nurse, then there is an increased workload into this position, in which case there's a, there's a good argument to maintain the position. If the answer is not really, then it becomes a less of a driving argument.
What, what do you have in mind?
Oh, we were staffed far more amply than this with school psychologist and counselor, full-time both.
Full-time both?
Yeah. Chickering has a full-time counselor and a full-time school psych.
Blush with cash, though. So, and what was the population of the school? It was about the same size?
Exactly the same, yeah.
All, all the work that is going on, I mean, great work the wellness committee is doing, there, there has to be a point where we're going to be implementing things. And, you know, we, we need, we need the, the resources to do that. And I'm not saying this is it, but we need to think about that.
It's different, the council and psychologist roles in our schools look, different look and feel, I guess, depending on the, the school. And I think part of that's attributable to the developmental needs and, and requirements, right, of, of the student populace. But they are, they're, they're different configurations in each school. It's interesting to watch. And it's interesting how the personality is factoring. You know, I think with our school psychologists at the region, it's a very different service delivery model than it was with our, with our previous school psychologists. So a lot of it is pretty dependent person-specific.
Kind of underlines some of the uniqueness of the role at Pine Hill.
We spent quite a bit of time on this. Just, as long as it's fresh in our mind, does someone want to make some sort of motion that would give some direction to the superintendent on this item?
Do we need to, I mean, it's all part of the larger budget, right? So...
Could, could we frame it a little bit? So if we look at your, your big COL pages, tab two, and you go to the bottom of your third page, bottom of the third, it's third line. Is it four?
Oh, good.
Third, it's bottom of third page. And you'll see the total in district education. So bottom of third page, you'll see at the very bottom, total in district. So this is notwithstanding any consideration around, you know, out of district special education costs, be it for Sherborne or, or regional age Sherborne students. We're at 2.06%, which is north of, unto itself, north of advisory's guidance. If the guidance counselor position, which is in this presentation right here, it's in at 80%, if it's restored at 100% at a 1.0, if that's the direction provided, doesn't need to be in a vote, but if that's the direction of the, well, the committee, Ms. Teague ran the numbers earlier, then that puts it at 2.41%. But all one needs to do is quickly turn the page, and when, and when you factor in pretty significant reductions in the area of special education, the overall, the grand total of Pine Hill's budget for fiscal year 16 at the moment, at the moment, is negative 0.75%.
Right. And also, is, if we just took just Pine Hill, both our in district and out of district, we're just at 1% for all Pine Hill.
Correct. That's correct.
So, and the thing is, I know that, Greg, next time we will vote on the whole budget, but I think so that we have a corrected whole budget to vote on come December. It would be good to give direction now if we wanted him to reflect some changes to vote on in December.
I think we would talk about the budget as a whole. I mean, there's, there's a number of things that I don't quite understand, items that were budgeted. They seem to be budgeted larger than they, than they need to be, which would more than make up for this position.
Okay. But I still think we could sort of give, you know, a direction here, and then we could take a look at where your concerns are, which is in another direction.
Are you generally okay with the idea of being, keeping it at 1.0, that type of thing, or?
Or somewhere around there, yeah.
You're not saying we need to make a formal motion, though, for everything, right? Because that doesn't seem to make sense.
Well, okay, I mean, it's just as long as, we're clear with our direction.
We always do, we always draw revisions page. So if we had a sense that the well of the committee was for the guidance counselor to be retained at 1.0, we then will start, like we do with all of our budgets every year for each district, we have a, like a little crib sheet, and it says, "This came in, this came out, this came in, this came out, all the adjustments." We would tomorrow, Ms. Teague would begin that by just saying, "Guidance goes from point eight to 1.0. It's an increase of this."
Just have the delta of all the items you're talking about.
That's it. Delta, that's it.
So just as we, we sort of have some consensus at this point in time, that we would like it to be 1.0.
I think we're, we're reading right now that you would like it to be 1.0.
How are we calling for the consensus?
Well, that's why I was going to suggest a vote.
Sorry to interject, but the, in the past, you've taken something called a straw poll?
Yeah.
As opposed to making a motion?
Okay, yeah. We could, we could do that. So straw poll, how many people want to keep it at 1.0? Say aye. Okay, so, and that sort of gives, you know, turns some direction for, we'll just come back again. Right now, Greg, you had some other areas, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Start on...
So some of the things, just, I guess, the budgeting process, the municipal budgeting process is a little confusing, because we've got the current year that we haven't spent yet, and we're budgeting based on increases on this year that we haven't spent. So things like last year, where utilities were $30,000 less, why are you looking at them that way?
No, it's all, I had to speak to that.
Well, so $30,000 less, we know that that's, I mean, you had, you had done a, a good job in terms of lock, locking in contracts and things like that. So that, that could be, you know, a lock-in of a lower rate, or it could be a warmer winter or whatever, so we don't know. But the, says was, with respect to utilities, this proposed budget reflects a 51% increase in electricity cost.
My question's true.
Is, is that, that's not over, what's that a 51% increase of? Not FY '15?
No, because we have basically about a $30,000 variance in '15, because we locked in the rates, okay?
Right.
I'm saying we don't have to adjust '16, but I don't want to reduce it, because we, we will have a contract increase. I'm out in the market right now, just, and that's one of the, I really would like some direction from the committee. Our contract expires in December of this year. So...
December of '15.
Yeah, '15. I mean, three fiscal years. So as a result, we're going to have to go either float variable, which I'm being told is probably not the best to do. So I had a broker give us estimates based on where the market is today. Just so you know, we're paying .076 cents. The current market is at 11.54 cents. It's a significant increase.
So when you say a 51% increase, you're talking about keeping the budget flat at 150.
Right, correct.
But it's an increase over what we, okay, all right, all right.
But I would like some direction from the committee. Normally, I would make the decision, but...
Prognosticate on...
No, only because I'm going to enter into a contract that really I won't be administering for 12 months, for a 12-month period. I'm being, it's being recommended to me, we lock in at the 11.54 for a 12-month period. And the primary reason why they're looking at these electric, electricity rates going to the levels, maybe even 18 cents, a point, which is significant, is because all the gas, the coal-fired plants are shutting down in Massachusetts, and they're having to rely more on gas to generate the electricity. And as a result, the gas, as you know, well know, the pipeline is, is at issue. They're also looking at increases in gas. So based on what I've read in discussions with my counterpart, I would recommend to the committee to lock in for that 12-month period, but not for any longer. Because I think once that pipeline comes through, you'll start to see gas and electricity rates come through.
This is the one through northern Massachusetts?
Yes. It's a political issue right now.
A gas pipeline?
Yeah.
So it's...
One that goes by my house. Is, we're talking about another gas pipeline?
This is, no, this is, they have to...
Just the Keystone?
Yeah, they have, they have to really do some infrastructure changes to the northeast.
Okay.
Okay? And until they do that, forget it, we're going to continue to pay higher gas and electrical prices than the rest of the country.
Right now, there's only one pipe that comes in from the south that feeds the north for gas. And they're looking at bringing in a, a second one to feed New England.
I have no idea.
It was on NPR just yesterday. I heard a big talk on it.
I'd just like to lock in, and, and as a result, for the 12-month period, so you know your budget costs next.
So if you lock that in, then, then that hits the, the 80,000 for the electric? No, I have no idea.
Yes, it will.
See, a straw poll?
I'd like to be...
Yes, I'm looking for a lock-in.
Yeah.
I abstain.
There we go.
Ain't I feel?
Well, it's, and Chris raised the point the other day. It's really, really important also with a new business manager coming in, because keep in mind, it's all these different contracts in different districts, and it would be, you know, less exposure for us to be locked in.
I think it's a good idea. You know your budget at this particular point for that 12-month cycle.
While he's looking, can I ask a question? So, sorry. So the 16.4% in transportation, is that projected? Do we have a contract? Did I miss?
That's projected at this point.
Projected.
Hopefully, that will come down. But there's also some considerations as well that could affect that number. that could affect that number concerning the start of time.
Start time.
Yeah, right now, we're the, the lowest in that area.
Yes.
Right, so is, is this factoring in potential start time issue changes, or?
To some degree.
To some degree, okay.
That's a, that's a healthy increase.
So, it's hedging a little bit?
We don't have a contract at the moment, and we won't, I mean, so we're just finalizing the, the timeline for the school start times committee work, which we're working as quickly as we can. On that, there'll be a huge sort of media blitz and surveys and all kinds of stuff going out, literally next week and the week after. The bottom line is, though, that these things are running in tandem. We're going to be out trying to put bid specs together to a, to potential transportation vendors, when there's a remote chance that, you know, something could happen with our school start times for next year. I mean, I, I think as time passes, that becomes remote, that that could happen for next year, but the committee's, again, another committee of 20 people doing good work, thoughtful. I just don't want to rush it, either, the work of the committee.
We, we do have a contract, but it expires at the end of this year.
Oh, it was a three-year with two roles, okay.
June, you mean.
Remember, that was a three-year contract with two roles.
Frank, do you have a question?
We, we had the presentation on MCAS. I was looking at some data about math. We had some discussions about math, math programs, math professional development, some enhancements, enrichments around math to try to look at our math scores. I just was curious, was there anything in this budget that is going to look at our math? Are we putting any money towards improving our math scores through professional development, through whatever mechanisms to look at that?
There's no increase reflected in professional development. The materials costs are, you know, there's the, whatever increase we made in textbooks was to reflect increase in materials cost. Our PD budget is flexible enough, we've, we won't be establishing our PD objectives until late in the spring for next year. So, so it's not that it's not included in here, but there aren't additional expenses specific to math.
If that winds up being an identified goal, then the PD line in the budget that's before you would support a platform of goals that could speak, although I don't think we want to presuppose, sitting here in November of this year, what those goals may be for next year. It would be too premature.
Okay, some other budget items people want to bring up?
I've got a question on the, on the lane changes, the anticipated lane changes. That sounds high, Ken. Is that, is that, what was it, the last couple of years?
It was four, five, and four. It is high, but we have to anticipate, when they're telling us, they're anticipating a lane change.
So, we take that at face value, so they have to notify us by a certain date if they're anticipating lane change. We then go, okay, and then when the dust settles, it usually is not 10, it could be. So, that's an area, Greg, as we move through this budget, that could deflate, but we, if 10 people said, we're expecting, that I'm expecting a lane change, we wouldn't want to say, well, let's hedge our bet, and let's think that only half of them will get it.
So, would you know that by, excuse me, by town meeting?
Um.
What was the notification?
No, that's the problem. They have until, they have until the, the end of the school
year to notify us about, to really do all the transcripts.
So, is that type of thing that's reflected in, in the, the overage, the budget to give back, the whatever, at the end of the year? One of, sort of my pet peeves is, we budget now based on something we don't know what's going to cost us, and then at the end of that period, we get money back, like, of, of this year, of FY '15, we'll, you know, get money back in a certain area, and then we budget, but we've already budgeted on a number we didn't know what it was. So, I guess, so when we talk about getting money back, it's not, it might be a great management thing that we managed it, and that was great, but, but a lot of times, it's like we over-budgeted because we had to, and now we just get money back. So, is there any way to, to know, like, the $25,000 we got back this year, how that sort of works out? I mean.
Do you recall, I don't recall, the numbers of, of people in the, in the last box on the matrix at Pine Hill? It was a, it was a.
Well, it was around two-thirds.
Yeah, so it's, it's a lot. So, it doesn't seem like you could have that many more lane changes or staffs left.
Well, it affects the entire faculty. I mean, you've got your nurses, no, I could actually give you the list of the.
So, that's the head count that I would, I, I'd just kind of like to see a, a head count without having to add up all the FTEs.
Right, so we ran that. So, the building, Christine ran this, 58.48 total positions in the building. That includes, that is not, though, a piece of me and a piece of a lot of us, but that does take Barbara, Frank, and all of the teachers. So, 58.48 positions in the building, that includes nurse, OT, PT.
How do you get a .08?
It's weird.
.48.
I would say it's .48, but that means.
Well, because like, for example, in the sped directors line.
It's a fraction.
It's a fraction.
They're probably 33.
Oh, the way the region's.
So, do we get the good part?
Terry has no bad part.
Yeah.
But if, if you look, Greg, for example, at the course reimbursement line, there are 36 people, the equivalent of 36 people on a teacher's contract.
Where's that, what, where's that?
Page, page two with the, in the spread out. So, of, of the full faculty and staff that Mr. Bliss mentioned, there are 36 people on the teacher contracts salary-wise, the equivalent of 36 people.
Oh, oh, okay, I got you.
Well, that 36, though, the contract for course reimbursement doesn't take into half people, so it's actually a, every, every person regardless would get, whether they're a .2 or a .
Yeah, that's a main line, 36 FTEs.
Okay.
Right.
There was another point, and Greg, you raised a good one, because as you know very well, through the contract negotiation, you and Mr. Hess, keep in mind that in the new contract, we have to budget for five longevity placements of $5,000 each. There is this much chance that next year, we'll have five retirements out of Pine Hill. And yet, the contract, you'll notice, you'll see it in the, in the line, in the longevity line, and, and that's where, in the, in the, in the old contract, so we have to budget each elementary school, five at $5,000, because keep in mind, that's the retirement incentive in the new contract.
And what, what were the conditions surrounding that, that, that would indicate they definitely would be retiring in the next year or two years?
In that year, so they'll notify, so that is, we already know that that's a line in the budget that, I mean, let's face it, statistically, there's no way five people are retiring next year, and it's 10 at the region. There's no way 10 people will retire next year. So, the region will see a $50,000 placeholder, and each elementary school will see a 25. That's a line that will naturally deflate.
Why is it, but why is it, why is it five?
It's the number we agreed to in the contract.
Oh, I forgot.
And I, from the, I think from the teacher's perspective, they're going to get their money regardless. We're taking, to your point about, we don't over-budget, but.
Well, I, I.
No, but for example, last year, we actually had five anticipated lane changes, but four did happen. So, if you didn't budget those anticipated, you could be left with a problem. And the Pine Hill budget is really winged. The wing is out of all three.
What about the bus contract? Did I, it's a pretty big number, but what's the, what is the situation with that?
Well, we're, right now, we're paying one of the lowest bus courses throughout the regional area. We're paying about $290, whereas the rest of the world is paying anywhere from 3.15 to 3.25, plus a fuel surcharge. We've been, our bus company has been very reasonable.
With us.
With us.
I know, we've been through this before, but that's like based on the number of kids.
It's the best guess at this stage of the game, so.
16 percent?
That could, that could go down, but until we really get the bid out there, we'll have that number, though, before town meeting, so, you know, before we finalize.
So, I think it's safe to say, based on the, you know, a couple, like, the, you know, we know, for instance, the, the longevity line, you know, five placeholders and five, it's a $25,000 placeholder, that's high. The transportation line's probably high. I mean, in effect, and this is kind of what the region does, they ultimately move forward with a, what they call, you know, a high watermark budget, knowing that they can all sort of adjust it down, just can't go up. So, you're probably seeing the worst-case scenario, that hopefully won't be actualized, and in effect, you'll, in the, in our little sheet that goes back and forth of ins and outs, you'll see a lot more things that'll be corrected as things be, that's part of the difficulty and part of Chris's reservation in doing a budget in November. We're just barely into this, the new, this fiscal year. Tough? And that speaks to your point, Greg, well.
So, does that mean that we think, then, given those pieces that we have to put in, like the longevity, and even some of the things that we're budgeting high because we don't, that we don't know, that we think that, that total in district education will end up probably coming in less than two, and actually, we're saying it's going to be 2.41 percent?
Right.
So, we, is there a thought of, then, what the percentage would be, and would we then come even closer or even more under budget advisories?
Oh, absolutely. As Steve indicated, these are your worst-case scenarios. So, if anything, that 2.4 will probably come down, if, if everything pans out the way, you know, we hope they do.
Right.
But it's, it's a shell game, and the problem is the timing. It's like what we know when we know it. And, you know, like, at the region, they have the added pleasure of trying to play the healthcare market, and figuring out, you know, what the healthcare rates will be, because the region bakes that into their budget. So, that's always, that's yet another, the region, it's always transportation, healthcare, court lane changes.
That also affects the town, too, because.
Yes, it does.
The healthcare cost here, so, it, which leads me to another question. The parts of the school budget that we never see are, I'm assuming, debt service and non-educated retirement?
Right.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
And, and healthcare for everybody, for the 58. whatever number it is.
That are at the town.
We pay a portion, like, the town pays a portion of.
No.
Shared?
The region pays for all of the benefits for people that are.
Awesome.
Allocated to us.
So, now, so.
And then your ass.
I'm just curious, could I find that out from Ruth, to, to find out what these, what debt service, non-educated retirement, and healthcare are?
Oh, yeah. She would be the person.
Know that for Pine Hill, okay. So, and that leads me to the question of, OOD, the proposed dollars, that's, what's the reimbursement rate that you set?
Okay, on that footnote, I just would like to point out that footnote is wrong. The number is right. Last year, we used 40 percent of 39, anything over 39,000. That came to $235,000. One of the things I'm starting to caution, I said, Steve, we have to make sure we caution both advisory on as well as school committee, that number isn't even, even at 40 percent. I'm at 1.59 as far as the reduction for circuit breaker.
Right.
So, because if you recall, last year, we reduced our out-of-district cost. Well, it has an effect on your circuit breaker reimbursement.
Right.
Forget the percentage sharing.
I'm, I'm curious, though, that when you budget this number, say for Pine Hill, and it's 219, let's just use a round number, let's say it's a million bucks for the, for the region in Pine Hill. So, and you, that budget is net of the circuit breaker reimbursement?
At a percentage.
So, that means you're going to get, as long as the actual reimbursement is greater than what you budgeted, you're going to get a bigger number. So, is this budgeted at 40 percent or 42 percent?
It's budgeted at 40 percent.
Okay.
However, the claims have actually come down. So, that 40 percent only translates into 159,000 versus the 40 percent compared to last year's budget.
But that, doesn't that mean just that, that the town is going to see less? We're not going to see these numbers like this, since 221, right?
That's exactly.
It's not going to affect, my concern was that you, if you budgeted that at 72 percent, and it came in at 50, it would be totally.
We have no question, right? I would never recommend that.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure. I think something said 72.
That's a good, that's a good question.
Okay, so that's done at 40 percent again. So, even though that number's going to drop, it's just that the town gets back less. It's not going to be something we have to, or the town has to make.
Mr. Hook, Craig?
I just had a question on the numbers. I must have did some calculations wrong, but if we take our number of the budget of 2015, we have 5,767,045, and you multiply that by the 1.5 percent, this is in the, and then you multiply it by the 1.5, which is the allocation that advisory's suggesting, by my calculation, we get 5,868,242 as, as the number, 5,868,242.
Well, if you go to their guidance, I mean, that's what.
So, that's 1.5 percent on.
Yep.
On 5,767,045.
It's 1.5 percent on 6,746,470.
That's the, that's, but that's not our, my number. I'm using our grand total of that number, which would be the 5,767,045.
I mean, just looking at, without the, out the region. He's looking at it without the region.
Without the.
Oh, right, right, so the pink line.
So, I'm using, I'm using, yeah, the pink, right below the pink line is the five, which is the Pine Hill budget, right?
Yep.
If you.
Right, right.
And then if you multiply it by 1.5 percent, it's 5,868,242. And if you take out the budget that we're looking at, which is 5,824,942, if you subtract that, the difference is 43,300. So, I don't understand where this variance number of 57,897 came from.
Because the way that.
So, when I subtract 5,868,242 from 5,824,942, I get 43,300.
Where are you getting 5,868?
Okay, I took the 5,767 from 2015. I multiply that by 1.5 percent, so 1.015, and I get 5,868,242 is, is the number that we should be hitting on that grand total line above the orange.
Of one and a half percent.
For one and a half percent.
But no, they don't, they don't calculate, I'm, I'm not saying you're not right, but that's not how they calculate their, that's become a, a debate, I think.
Well, I'm just, I just, regardless of what they are saying, this, you got a variance of 57,897, and my, my calculation is just 43,300, so I, I guess I'm trying to figure out.
Because you're, you're, you're taking it, you're, you're projecting an increase that we haven't used, the whole increase.
I think he's saying that you would have, if you took one and a half percent of 5,767,045, you would have 5,860.
5,868.
8,242.
Right, but we're only budgeting 5,824,942.
Right, and the difference between those two values are 43,000, not 57,000.
Right, but the 57,000 is the difference between the 5,767,045 and the 5,882,4942. That's where you get the, the 57.
7,045. Yeah, see, it's, this is just the difference between this and this.
Okay.
Just subtract that from that, and you get, and you get.
This is the delta for those two.
I think maybe you have, well, this is 43,000 more than, than this. So, you're saying, you're saying we've got 43,000 more.
Than 57,000.
But it doesn't, I don't think, you got it, you have to include the regional OOD as well.
Right.
But what, just for this line item, because when we go through the budget, that's a line item number that they vote on. That's, that's the Pine Hill number, and then you got the total budget number. So, that's the number that, that's on the, from last year and the year before, I remember that they, on the advisory.
They took Pine Hill in district and out of district.
Yeah.
But, but either way, it's still.
But, so I'm saying, I'm saying we got, that there's more money in the variance than what, what this is indicating.
We'll have to look at it tomorrow. We could take a look at, you know what I'm interested to do, based on what Mr. Hook is saying? I'm interested to take the numbers from advisories' guidance.
And beef it up by one point.
Well, and just tie, tie back their numbers in this, this is there.
I did.
You did.
Yeah. I mean, the total is, the categories, without the regional OOD.
Correct.
Maybe you're off a little bit, okay, but in total, it's right. So, I don't.
But the, the way we think of one and a half percent, the reason, the reason the budget can go up 2 percent of what you have proposed here is because the regional OOD is down.
That's correct.
And.
You know, it's
They really
Pine Hill and regionals.
They calculate the 1.5% in total.
You know what they did?
Including the region.
They did here. So, Mr. Hook, if you look on this colorful chart here
Yeah.
Under fiscal 15.
Right.
You see the number way at the bottom, 6, 7, 4, 6, 4, 7, 0?
Yeah.
That number I'm pointing to right in their advisory letter is right here. They took that number and they multiplied that by 1.5% to get to an allowable, allowable number of 6,847,667. So they were allowing in guidance, in the advisory for our budget to go up 101,197. Like, that 6, 7, 4, 6 ties right out
To the
Advisory for the total, including regional.
I don't see where that is in the advisory letter.
Sure, okay, so keep going into the, did you print out all of the
Oh, no, we didn't, I don't know if we printed the entire
Wait a minute.
That's what, right here. Because it was like a book.
So this is all the handoffs?
That's where it could be printed, it'd be good to have in here.
That's
So that's what they would have allowed, is the 101. We didn't come in at that.
Okay. Well, I'm just, I guess I'm still kind of looking at what the Pine Hill component is, and it seems to me we're still, it says that we're, you know, the variant is 1002, you know? So we got another 43,300 before we hit the 1.5, I guess is what I'm saying.
You could make that argument.
The allowable for that line item. So that means that that number is really almost $100,000.
Almost what?
$100,000 below what we are being targeted at.
Yes.
You know, and
That's favorable.
Right, and last year, we were even more than that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And that, but that was because of special ed.
Right. Okay, are there any other inputs on the budget?
Can I point out one thing?
Sure.
That I thought was interesting, looking at past budgets, is the component salaries and other compensation has always been exceptionally high. And I can't find one for last year, but for FY14, it was 81% and now it's 71%.
Weird.
That's a, that's a, that's a happy, happy trend, so that's a
We've actually seen that in all of our districts with hiring new positions.
Well, it's good to have a positive.
Next meeting, I'm going to
I think it's great all the way around. I think it's, I think it's super.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stacey. Okay, so are we, go to capital then, or?
Sure. What would you like to talk about next, Mr. Hess?
Drains.
What, drainage?
I used it drinks.
Chris, it had, we had a number in there, 15 grand for extraordinary maintenance. I didn't, I didn't see a line in the budget for ordinary maintenance.
It's on page, um
I saw the extraordinary, but we do have, do we have just a maintenance line in there?
Yes. Maintenance contract services on page three, purple, under custodial services.
Okay, so that's, oh, that's custodial. But I'm talking about like, we got to paint something.
Well, that's part of that 15 grand.
Oh.
We come
We call it extraordinary, but it's not ordinary. It's less than extraordinary.
Okay.
So, Mr. Hess, are we ready for capital?
Yes. And capital, we will be meeting next Monday with the
I already gave
Pine Hill School Building Committee. And since we last met, there've been some changes.
Well, since this afternoon, there've been some changes.
Since this afternoon, there's been some changes.
It's, it's a moving target. And it's, it's happening with, we actually presented this morning Dover's capital, before Dover Capital Committee. So that, that district's sealed. You'll recall that we've been a part of a multi-year windows campaign at Pine Hill. And this, this, Pine Hill Building Committee is a wonderful group, and there was really some discussion maybe about two and a half months ago about the notion of, do we in fact finish this windows project, which the last swing of this would be the library and the library classrooms, you know, the classrooms off the library. And the, the price tag of that was like, you know, 123,611, I think exactly, was what's in, that was in the report. And then we were factoring in a contingency, and the Pine Hill Capital Committee said, whoa, timeout, you know, does it make more sense to engage a company in looking at the entire envelope of the building and looking at where our, where our real energy loss is occurring? So we engaged a company called Conservation Services Group. And at the last meeting here, we talked a little bit about the insulation work and, and whatnot. So essentially, the Pine Hill Capital Committee decided, you know what, it's probably best to put the window project kind of on hold and address this massive kind of insulation issue, the soffit issue. Because that's where more dollars are flying, literally, flying out the roof of the building in that, more so than they are through the windows. Right? So they both need to be done, it's just a question of who's on first. So you'll see on here a placeholder for windows, and you'll see this big note next to it. And ultimately, what this ultimately means, and this was Mr. Hess's very good idea the other day, was we should probably keep money in this request for next year so that we can do the engineer, the architectural work involved in looking at the library classrooms and the library windows. Not necessarily doing the project, but it takes so long to get all of that legwork done. So let's keep a $28,000 placeholder, which Christine thinks is valid, in there, in our ask. So we'll have $28,000 to be able to start the architectural work next year. We won't get to the windows yet, but at least by the time the next ask for capital comes up, we'll have all this work done.
Right, and Keisha Lifton, you know, the architect on our committee, wants to take a look and see if we can get the best possible solution for the windows. And this is a little more than just replacing windows, because in the library, we're talking about having a waist-high solid wall rather than window, than windows up above. Same in the cafeteria. And then we have to look at the sliding windows that are in some of the rooms. So there are a lot of different things that have to be done. And so this will give us time to have the engineering so that we'll get the best possible solution. And it won't put us back any further, I don't think, because these things take a year and a half to do anyway.
So in the version that you looked at at our last meeting, the, for the air handling units, the number has not changed, the work has not changed. The classroom unit events, number has not changed, work has not changed. Site curbing, number has not changed, work has not changed. Windows has been adjusted to simply give us some money to be able to work on the architectural end of it. The soffit roof insulation work, there's an asterisk, and essentially, the note next to that indicates that this would be for the lead paint removal and disposal, the soffit work in the A Wing, and for the actual work itself, $36,000, $36,500. And what, what remains though, is that we will have, we have some money remaining in the insulation appropriation from this past ATM, from the annual town meeting last year. We'll be able to use some of that money for that. The drainage work is, is a big issue. Christine talked earlier about getting some of the, the general maintenance work done, but we have a massive problem with water in and around the, the building. And there's no place for this water to go, so we have ponding that occurs, we have major issues. And the notion at the last Pine Hill meeting was, could we do the work up, up around the building and have that water flow into the storm, the roadway storm drain system? So essentially, it'd be bringing all this water, introducing it into the roadway stormwater system, and feeding that, and that, that's how we would essentially dispose of the water, redirect the water from around the building and have that. And, and so we met the other day here in the town hall with a whole cadre of people to chat about that a little bit. And the Conservation Commission has since said, well, you know, you may have an issue because you can't necessarily take water from in and around the building and just put it into a roadway, a roadwater system that wasn't intended to have all this other water introduced to it. So we received a written, of course, we received written correspondence from the Conservation Committee the same day, the other day, saying, hold the phone, it isn't that you can introduce all of this into a system that wasn't necessarily built for this. You'll also recall that we have the problem down the Jamison Fields where the, those fields are flooding, we had the issue. Remember, we sort of went back and forth with the town on who was responsible for that issue. So do you want to pick that up, Mr. Hess?
Well, basically, they're, we're going to put a pipe in there and run it over across Cemetery Lane to the pond, and they're saying now we cannot do that. So it looks like we're going to have to run this water a different direction, either run it towards where the new road is
Emergency road.
And have the drywells there.
Yeah.
Or even in the, in the play area and have a drywell on there, but probably over to where the road is. And, and so that's, before we were looking at the town sharing the field part, because that's town land. But now we probably would not, it's probably all come under the school.
So we, right, we were thinking of taking the water from in and around Pine Hill, pushing it into this other system, and sort of having that piece of the transaction covered in our, we had thought about 48,000 or something like that for the drainage. And then the town would kind of step in and say, okay, now we're going to take all this water, the issue in the lower fields, and we will run a pipe from Cemetery Lane across and have it deposit into the pond across the way, across the street. And the Conservation Committee is, is rightfully or for whatever, you know, chiming in saying, you know, you can't necessarily introduce that into the pond.
Not to be precarious, but do we know that that is indeed legally the case?
Well, there was chapter and verse cited from the conservation person here in Sherwood. We're just checking that through Ralph with the EPA.
I asked him to have Ralph check his sources too.
Where does the water go from the storm drain now? Out to the field?
Yes.
But that had to be corrected anyway though, right?
Well, it was partially corrected.
No. They still might need to build a pipe down there just for the, the roadway storm drains because they still have a problem. But they, they're sort of talking likely they could live with that.
So just to be clear, this is a moisture problem that, it's not new. We've had it for a while.
Yes.
It's just the Conservation Services Group noted this as a problem with, with wicking on the concrete pads of whether it's the, the gymnasium floor and its condensation or the other, the carpets and the other floors.
Right. That's why we have
So it's been, it's been a problem for a long time, we just haven't done anything about it.
And it's called an illicit discharge, is the term. So it could be, it could be construed as an illicit discharge to take the water from in and around Pine Hill and deposit it into a roadway discharge system for which it was never intended to be the recipient. And that's what's considered an illicit discharge. So, and so we're researching the laws around that.
Yeah, and they're citing the permit and
So
Right.
It seems like you could, it seems like you could put a French drain
Correct.
In a lot of places, but if it's uphill, you're going to, you're going to have to pump it, right?
So what, what, what this number does is $88,000, it says, okay, we need to correct this problem in and around Pine Hill, and as Mr. Hess said, we could, we could build a drywell system and redirect the water and, and just not introduce it at all to the roadway system, avoid the entire kind of EPA, remedy the problem, but more expensive to the, to the school's capital ask.
And it doesn't solve the problem down the bottom of the road.
Doesn't solve the field problem.
No, the, the only way down for that water, except going back down Pine Hill where it goes, is to go in the other direction and go down by the new road. You know, we'd go along beside it and perhaps make a drywell, and then it would
So, so this is, this is a good number, 88?
It, it's as good as, I mean, this is as moving target as, as you can even imagine. I mean, we were on the phone three, four hours ago, Mr. Hess chatting about this. So we, we think based on conversation with Ralph, this number would have been like 48 if we were able to tie into the other system, but now we're talking about basically having a standalone drainage system that's not going to tie into the existing system. Which, to be honest, without having that water flowing into it, I mean, maybe ultimately it will help in not introducing so much to the lower fields by redirecting some of the water.
I wanted to ask that if, does it seem like potentially in the long run, this redirecting in a different direction may end up being better? Because we, clearly there are issues with it, the current drainage system now and going down to the field. So that maybe if we did that way anyway, we'd still then, five years from now, say, well, we have to then continue to buck up that system. Whereas if we do it right the first time, it may end up, over the long haul, costing less?
Well, I mean, it even triangulates into some issues with the firehouse, the downtown fire station, and, and then if, if this were actually done this way, feeding down to Jamison, the notion would be that we would run a pipe back up, sorry, and feel, and feed, there's a fire hydrant halfway up Pine Hill, and that we would be able to feed that. Right now, there's no water source to that fire hydrant. So that is another added benefit of doing it and affecting the entire operation, but involves going onto the main street and it's quite a production.
So the, the cost might not be that much different doing it ourselves, but to Amy's point, to the taxpayer, it's not going to make much difference because it's going to be, you know, either on the school side or the town side, it's still an infrastructure type of payment.
Yeah, and in the meantime, we have some real impact. So I mean, if the town said, oh, well, we'll take it under advisement for the next couple of years or something, which I don't think is out of the realm of, we have a real issue with the presence of humidity and moisture, and it affects our gymnasium floor, it affects our lower classrooms, it affects our playground areas, our ability to send children out to play, you know, some real, real issues.
Now, this, this figure can be adjusted in the future, like if the Capital Committee meets on, on Monday, they might want to adjust it, or we could even, you know, adjust it in our December meeting or afterwards. But before our next meeting, we have to have a, a notice of intent in, to have an article for this capital request. So I would like us to, to vote for now anyway, that 230,550 figure, and then we can adjust that down, or we could even adjust it up later if we had to. But basically, if we have that placeholder in, then I can file that notice of intent.
That's right.
So if someone wants to make a motion that we
I've, I've got a couple more questions about
Yep.
This, some of the other items?
Sure.
Okay, so the air handling units, major component overhaul and duct cleaning. We have $19,000, our, $19,000, I guess, for, for contracted HVAC, contracted services, and that's, we expended 89.50 in 2014.
Right.
What's that covered?
That's actually
Why is it so much more and what's it covered?
We actually have a contract for the maintenance of the system. What, what this air handling capital item is, is like manufactured, what they're saying you need to do to overhaul the system every 10 or 15 years. That is really just to handle if, if they come in and they clean, they might clean vents and, and things such as that.
Well, so why is the content, we got, expended 8900 bucks in '14 and budgeted 19,000 in '15, and we're, and we're budgeting the same amount, why did it jump so much from the, in the budget from
No, it's always been the 19, I believe, Greg. It's just, that was what we, we actually didn't spend as much as we had
Don't you have like a, a, a one-year, a contract for a particular period of time for a set
Yeah, but it also may handle pots, because we didn't have an extraordinary maintenance line item. The contract itself is only labor. It doesn't include pots. So if, if we have like a fan that goes, the pot, the pot will come out of that line item.
So now, and Greg
But if we've been budgeting 19 and we've never hit 19, somebody will knock that down.
I
We could check with Ralph.
Yeah, we could take
But this is strictly, the capital item strictly for the massive air handling, HVAC, U1, 1 and 2 in the library, that are huge units that are in the library that have not been recommissioned.
And they'll need lifts. And only lifts.
That's what the seventeen thousand dollars is.
So, it also makes it more quiet.
Right, we hope.
And that's the type of thing that, when I went to the MASC conference, as they were talking about is capital items, they said, a lot of people run to fail, and when you run to fail, you end up getting a, you know.
So, what I'm saying is, is that something that, the, the major component overhaul, is that something that should have been done in a regular maintenance contract?
That's debatable. Some people say it's really maintenance, and some people, well.
Well, is part of, I mean, is, is that something that can be covered?
No, not with the existing contract. That would be over and above. We'd have to get a cost.
So, one of my, I guess my general complaint is, it seems like a lot of things that are maintenance are actually covered in, in capital. And the capital, that, that service, we never see. Nobody knows what that is, and that's, that's a true cost of running the schools. And if we borrow two thou, two hundred grand every year, year after year after year, then it's more expensive than working it into the operating budget, because we're paying debt service, we're, we're paying interest, right? So, I mean, it's a.
I see what you mean. We had the same discussion this morning with Dover Capital. We were looking at duct cleaning at twenty-four thousand, seven-hundred-and-seventy dollars, and having a debate around, you know, it's not really capital, because it's not replacing something or adding something, but it's big money. And ultimately, the decision was, eh, put it in operating maintenance, because it's not, you know, it's not really capital.
So, when we're coming, it appears that we're coming out sort of under budget or with some room to spare. We have a choice of taking those dollars, let's say we, we've got fifty, like Frank's choice, we've got forty-eight grand or whatever the number is. Why not take that out of, out of your capital spend and put it in, make that main, extraordinary maintenance item larger?
Well, also, advisory last year, when it came down to town meeting, they, they suggested taking some things out of the, like returning back a lot of free cash. You know, like from spend and so forth. So, they suggest taking some of those things for the smaller capital items out of free cash and not borrowing them, like you're saying. And that might be the, the better way and a more flexible way to do it.
So, they may essentially affect your, what you're exactly saying, but they may do that in an aggregate level, at the town level, by saying, we've got such turnbacks.
Okay, that's right.
You see what I mean? They may not actually borrow.
Okay.
They may say, look, this two-hundred-and-thirty grand, we can do it.
Right.
And they wouldn't like to use so much the free cash for like a teacher or operator, I mean, unless they really got squeezed. We all got squeezed, I'd much rather use it for like a incident.
Okay, lastly, the library shelving. I, I don't know if I missed that meeting in terms of the capital.
Yeah, there were good things you put books in.
And how long did, yeah, got it. How long have they been, how long have they been there?
Since the beginning of time.
Okay, so they've never, have they ever hurt anybody yet?
Well, what's the condition of the library shelves? Barbara tells a good story.
They're, they're wobbly and rusted. Mrs. Ryan has done a fabulous job of spray painting over them. So, you, you can't, you can't see their shabbiness, but they're, some of them are sagging, they're, they're not holding the weight that they're intended to hold.
This seems like a lot for shelves.
Shelving is super expensive for school libraries.
I guess it is.
Because of the durability.
And, and these units actually are, when the ones are on a roll, they're on the casters, so that when we have to re-carpet, or we have to clean the carpets, or we want to reposition the library, they're, they're mobile.
Much easier to use in space.
Oh, yeah, dynamic space. Furniture's expensive. Okay, and there's never been a line, thank you to the school committee. We've never had, we've never had a line to replace anything for the library, for, for furnishings in that building. And stuff's going, I mean, teachers with bookshelves that lay, they're sort of a, you know, like a thirty-degree angle, you know?
Any other capital questions here? If not, could I have a motion to put forward the two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars for capital request?
So.
Any second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Alls in favor? Opposed? Was that in favor or opposed?
I had my, well, you said a favor, I raised my hand.
Okay, all right, I spoke too quickly, okay. Okay, so next we have our consent agenda.
So, I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda?
Second.
Any discussion?
If, if we could just, can we, yeah, I mean, if we could just.
You mean on the donations, you want to speak?
Yeah, on the donations.
Yes.
I mean, the SAWN fund, thank you so much for the twelve thousand dollars that we've sent a letter off, and to Mr. and Mrs. Parvys Taibati, thank you so much. This is a fifteen thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty-dollar, one-hundred-and-fifty-nine-dollar total donation. Check arrived last Friday, this is part of a multi-phase donation. This is for engineering kits for grade two. This is for a supplemental for the maker space in the library for a component called Little Bits, and it's also for some Chromebooks.
How, how did that come about in terms of engineering kits for grade two? That sounds great.
Oh, Miss Sidney.
Did somebody say, oh?
I went to a workshop last year, Museum of Science, and I saw a lot of the kits, but I thought the Bridges one would be perfect for second grade. I was teaching first at the time, so as soon as I got to second, I said, I want to use this unit for second grade. The line is perfectly for the, right now.
The, the Museum of Science has over twenty engineering kits, mini-units of study.
So, how did the donation come about?
Oh, I definitely do that.
But that seems like, that seems like that would be something for CSA or DSEF, but these, these individuals said they.
Sure, the family met, has been meeting with us frequently for the past six months or so. And in particular, the Taibatis are really interested in STEM, STEAM initiatives, and anything related to engineering, technology. So, they asked Dr. Brown to put together, are there any things the teachers are in need of in the building of that bent? Bingo, Miss Sidney.
So, these are people that, that came forward and said, we want to help in some way, how can we help?
Absolutely, okay.
Okay, and while we're talking about the consent, you have this MASC joint conference law rulings, which, you know, if you can't get to sleep, you can, you can read these. But there were some very important things that they came up with, and that's the number four on the school committee selective arbitrator, is that we don't have very many, very many arbitrations, so when it comes time to pick the arbitrator, we don't have any knowledge of who the arbitrators are. And so they, this is just allows us to send all of our decisions to the MASC, and they will have this whole library of decisions, so when it comes time to pick an arbitrator, we will have the same knowledge that some of the teachers' groups do as far as who's a good arbitrator and a fair arbitrator.
Arbitrations arise when you have a grievance that's not solvable at a local level. You would seek to engage an arbitrator in that particular dissolution, the dissolution of that issue. We don't have a rich history of that, but MGL section one fifty E, MGL one fifty E, section one, allows for school committees to say, we will have the MASC serve as our arbitrator.
Right, so it's just like a bench trial where the judge is the judge and the jury, so you want to have a fair person. So, anyone want to move to, we already have a motion to approve?
We have a motion, with this was discussion.
Okay, any, all in favor? Okay, now we have a, do we have a minutes to approve? I guess we don't. I think it was on.
They were in there.
Yeah, this is the first one, the consent issue.
On the consented meetings of ten fourteen?
eighteen, first one.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you. One other thing is that at the MASC conference, one thing I went to, it says, thanks for the feedback. And I sent, sent some of you a PowerPoint on that, and I have a book here, I'll give it to Mr. Bliss, and he can pass it around.
Thank you.
Take a look at it. And I also went to a conference that was entitled, and it was quite a long one, and there's some role-playing, it was called Getting Along With Difficult People. And I met with school committee people from all over the state, and I want to tell you that we're very fortunate. I heard some stories, and we can discuss things, but I think we are very lucky here to have the group we have who can discuss things and, and work things out. And thank you all for that.
Thank you for being able to have such a healthy conversation about the budget.
Right, and.
We're putting it together so early, I don't think.
In the feeling about an extra meeting, it doesn't look to me, unless someone feels differently, that we would need an extra meeting, we should be able to work things out at our December meeting?
I would think so.
Okay, so we won't plan another one. Well, I sent out a notice that you thought it was necessary that you should bring your colleagues to perhaps have an extra meeting, and it doesn't look to me like we might need one, we might be able to work it out. I agree, at our December ninth meeting, is it?
Yes, December ninth.
Okay, are there any other things that people want to include on the budget for our next meeting, besides, on our agenda rather, rather than the budget? Okay, if you come up with something meanwhile, why don't you give me an email or?
The focus is still budget, though, right?
Oh, right, right, absolutely, the budget is still the.
So, we're really looking to January for additional topics potentially.
Right.
I'm literally doing the joint one with, doing something joint with Chikari.
Uh, that's February, it's with Fless, yeah. So, we'll try to, you know, and we'll come up with some topics, but yeah, December will still be largely, but tis the season, you know?
Okay, nothing else? Someone move, move to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Good meeting. Hess did a good job. What do you have?